I suspect it probably.
But he's still shuffling in. He's got a couple more.
Yeah, I mean, if the people are closing my doors.
Hmm, I wasn't sure which one was.
Well, it's legal.
You're probably right.
Hey, Rob, your question?
White Oaks.
On the White Oaks one, I live on White Oaks.
Yeah, I'm really not that opposed.
So you're wondering, lucky you, you can leave.
No, it's, I have opinions, but.
Oh, absolutely, it doesn't matter.
I mean, he just wants to make sure of.
Oh, absolutely, you haven't.
Well, just because he lives on the street.
Everybody lives in town.
He's just being honest.
Everybody lives in town.
Of your point, but I'm not too far away.
He just wants to get clear.
Move to get your membership to be full membership. You're still listed as an alternate.
That's not my deal.
Have to call Ms. Brown.
That's, doesn't the board have to do that? That's not my deal.
Yeah, I have to get interviewed by city, a couple of city council guys.
All right, folks.
It's a committee for that.
Eric can interview you.
Well, that's not my deal.
We have a big agenda tonight, so it's six thirty. I'll call the May meeting of the zoning board of adjustment to order. Scott?
Okay, and intended tonight, we have Richard Vody, we have Councillor Hoffman, Jane LaRoche, Michael Delavecchia, Marcia Hayward, Planning Director Rob Moran, and myself, Scott Alchard. I'll be taking the minutes tonight. Mr. Chair?
First, we have to approve the minutes from the last month. Everybody had a chance to review.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you.
I will second.
Very good, all in favor? That's all done with. No extensions? Okay, first up on the agenda is Thirty-Five Oak Street. Are you here tonight?
Mr. Chair, would you like to appoint your alternates as full members?
Oh, yeah, Eric and Richard will be full voting members this evening. Thank you, Rob. Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tim Britton. I'm from Cleveland Waters and Bass, and I am here to represent Claudia Salabashi with respect to a variance application concerning Thirty-Five Oak Street. My colleague, Mark Waldner, is putting up a copy of the plan that you should have within the application itself. Claudia, would you stand up so they can see you? So, let me know when you want me to begin, Mr. Delavecchia.
Go ahead, Mr. Britton.
Same date.
So, in addition to the survey plan prepared by Richard Bartlett and Associates, within our application was some architectural plans with respect to the proposed use. I thought it might be helpful, I have no doubt everyone's familiar with the location, but I do have some photographs that would help orient folks.
Not I, I'm good.
You're good?
I'm good.
I walked around everything.
Okay, so everyone is familiar with it. I will just give one set to Scott so that we can have it as part of the record. So, this property is a somewhat unique property because it's on the southerly side of Oak Street and the easterly side of Dartmouth Street. It is an existing three-family dwelling. It has been a three-family dwelling since probably around nineteen thirty and at least a duplex since eighteen ninety-four, according to the tax cards for the property. The street address is Thirty-Five Oak Street. The tax map and lot number is map four twenty-four, one sixty-nine, forty-one, and it has a total of about a quarter of an acre of land. So, there are two buildings on the property. I will refer to them as Building One, which is the long building between Dartmouth Street and fronting on Oak Street. Thirty-Five Oak Street as an address is actually the, that portion of Building One that fronts towards the southerly side of Oak Street. Fifty, sixty-five Dartmouth Street is the unit that fronts onto Dartmouth Street. The third unit is fifty-nine Dartmouth Street, and it's that building down towards the southerly side of the lot. So, this property is served by municipal water and sewer. There are presently four parking spaces. There's two that come in off of Oak Street, and then there's another two near the southerly side of the property that come in off of Dartmouth Street. Claudia would like to build an additional unit within the property. Location of the unit would be in sort of the garage section of Building Number One. That's a two-bay garage. She would be converting one bay of the garage plus the storage space over, overhead. It would ultimately have three bedrooms, two bathrooms, storage space, and approximately seventeen hundred square foot of space. There would be a new driveway constructed from Dartmouth Street to serve this property that's shown sort of in the north-westerly corner of, of the plot plan. Twenty-six feet long, two nine-foot spaces within that driveway. The existing units are presently leased for both affordable and market-rate housing. Ms. Salabashi intends to lease this new fourth unit solely for affordable housing. We believe this project will increase housing availability and improve the property utilization in the area. Now, as the board probably already knows, this property is located in the residential general zone. The residential zone does permit multifamily housing as a special exception. This property is somewhat unique since it is a lawfully existing non-conforming use. It's been multifamily for, for quite some time, as I already indicated. The Laconia ordinance is somewhat unique in that it permits a non-conforming use to be expanded within the existing non-conforming building. So, what we propose for a unit will be entirely within the existing structure of this building. There's not going to be any new construction, just renovation of the garage and upstairs space. And importantly, under the Laconia zoning ordinance, a non-conforming use does not, such as this one, that's going to be renovated within its existing shell, does not need another special exception. But what we do need is four variances. The first variance is that we will need a variance from the density requirement from this zone. The current requirement is six units per acre. There's already three units. We're asking for an additional unit, so we'll need a variance from Section Two, Article Six, Section Two Thirty-five, Subsection Thirty-three, to permit the density to increase to a fourth dwelling unit. We also need a variance from Article Six, Section Two Thirty-five, Section Thirty-six regarding green space. As I think I indicated a moment ago, the property currently has a forty-six percent green space. With the new driveway, we would be seeking to reduce the green space to forty-one percent. We also need a variance from Article Eight, Section Two Thirty-five, Section Forty-eight A, to allow for the additional parking area to be designed to allow vehicles to back onto Dartmouth Street. And fourth, we need a variance from Article Eight, Section Two Thirty-five, Section Forty-eight E, to allow the newly created driveway parking spaces to be constructed within the front setback of the property adjacent to Dartmouth Street. This project needs all four variances, so our application and narrative have been based upon the fact that they're all integrated variances, and I intend to present the application as such. I have no doubt the board is well familiar with the familiar five-part test for a zoning variance. Following the sequence that your zoning application has, the first is that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. The spirit of the ordinance would be observed. Third, granting the variance would do substantial justice. Fourth, granting the variance would not diminish the values of surrounding properties. And fifth, the familiar hardship requirement that owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship. You look like you have a question.
Nope, no, I'm listening intently.
Very good. Turning to the first prong of the test, and please forgive me, my allergies really kicked in over the weekend, so if I start coughing and hacking, that's the reason why. So, with respect to the first requirement, granting the requested variances would not be contrary to the public, contrary to the public interest. As by way of introduction, under New Hampshire law, a variance is considered to be contrary to the public interest only when it unduly and in a marked degree conflicts with the zoning ordinance, so that it violates the basic zoning objectives of the ordinance. Under the Malachi-Glen case, which I'm sure this board is well familiar with, there are two methods for determining whether a variance would violate the basic zoning objectives of an ordinance. The first is whether granting the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, or two, whether granting the variance would threaten the public health, self-safety, and welfare of, under the ordinance. It is our position, and we hope the board agrees, that this requested variance to add in one additional dwelling unit will not compromise the essential character of the neighborhood. As I previously indicated, the property is somewhat unique in that it fronts on two streets, both Oak and Dartmouth. It's also unique in the sense that the building configuration on the lot and the size of the buildings are somewhat significantly larger than many of the properties in the area. The area is a well-established neighborhood. There are several multifamily structures in, in the area. I can provide a map to the board if, if you would like, but I suspect you've seen them. So, for example, I believe that the property, immediately to the south of this property is a two-family structure. If you continue westerly on Oak Street, there's a three-family structure about three, three doors down on the northerly side of Oak Street. As I indicated, the proposed renovation will be entirely within the pre-existing building. We believe that these renovations will have a negligible visual impact and will be consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The house is going to look the same after the renovations as it does now. The new parking area will be contained in, within the new driveway and will be consistent with the existing parking configurations on just about all the properties of Dartmouth Street. They are driveways that connect with, with Dartmouth Street. If you drive up there, you see most of the cars are parked front-facing, and they're backing out onto Dartmouth Street. We don't believe that these requested variances will threaten the city's public health, safety, or welfare standards. To the contrary, the project will enhance the availability of safe, clean, and affordable housing options within the city. As I indicated, both the existing driveway and the proposed new driveway are, will be within the front setback on Dartmouth Street. That's consistent with just about every driveway on the properties there. To, to get within the, the property and have a driveway, you have to cross the front setback. We don't believe that this project's going to adversely affect traffic. At most, we are looking at two additional vehicles because we're adding two additional spaces. With these two additional spaces, we will be in compliance with the parking requirement for, for dwellings, which is one and a half parking spaces per dwelling, so there will be a total of six dwellings. The new driveways will ensure that pedestrian walkways remain unobstruction, unobstructed, and that the traffic flow on Dartmouth and Oak Streets is maintained. Now, both, both Oak Street, which is striped with a yellow line, and Dartmouth Street are sufficiently wide to accommodate traffic and will provide access to Route one oh six with, which is just five parcels down to the, to the east. Dartmouth Street is not a major through street, unlike Oak Street, and so we don't believe that this additional traffic is going to burden the volume of traffic on that, on that road. The new driveway is only four hundred and sixty-eight square feet, and it will have a very minimal reduction of green space from forty-six percent to forty-one percent. I don't believe introducing one additional unit is going to overtax the city services, and we believe that this project will uphold the city's commitment to public health, safety, while contributing positively to the community. So, I believe that this, this variance application satisfies the first prong of the variance test. Similarly, I believe that our application satisfies the spirit of the ordinance requirement. As the board probably is aware, this, the spirit of the ordinance requirement is really not that much different than not contrary to the public interest requirement. Section Two Thirty-five, Two B of the ordinance recognizes various general purposes, and additionally, the specific intent of the RG zone in which this property is located is to, quote, "provide a variety of housing types in supporting facilities which complement and make more practical medium densities of residential development," and that's Section Two Thirty-five, fourteen, Item E. The requested variances will allow for the property to be used for its highest and best use, as, i.e. as an affordable multifamily residential property in a way that is advantageous to both Ms. Salabashi, to the general public, and without any burden or detriment to any neighbor of the town or the public at large. We believe the project supports many of the ordinances expressed general purposes. It will promote health, safety, and welfare by providing clean, affordable, and low-income housing without affecting natural resources. This type of housing also creates economic advantages for the city as it provides, provides an additional housing unit, enticing a family or several persons to live and spend money in the local economy. It provides safe housing, will likely reduce the need for other forms of reliance on public necessities and emergency services. As I go through the test, you're going to hear me sort of repeat some of the same lingo to meet the, the standards of the test, so bear with me. Again, the off-street parking will ensure that the pedestrian walkways remain unobstructed and that traffic flow on Dartmouth Street is maintained. I've already talked about the width of the two streets and the fact that Dartmouth Street is not a major through street. So, we believe that this project aligns very well with the specific purposes of the ordinance for the RG zone, and we believe allowing this project will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Turning to the substantial justice requirement, that element of the variance test is guided by two rules. That any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice, and whether the proposed development is consistent with the area's present use. As noted before, granting these variances will allow for the upgrade and improvement of the property in a way beneficial to the applicant and the public by enabling the property to be converted to a four-unit multifamily building. On the one hand, denying the variance would detrimentally harm Ms. Salabashi and the public because it would deny her a reasonable use of the property, preventing the potential beneficial increase in the value of the property and in turn, the tax base. Furthermore, the creation of additional safe, clean housing would con, or preventing the creation of additional housing would harm the city and contradict the ordinance's stated purposes of promoting health and welfare. And as we are all aware, because we hear it all the time, there is certainly a need for affordable housing, both in New Hampshire and specifically in Laconia. And RSA six seventy-four fifty-nine specifically requires municipal land use ordinances to provide reasonable and realistic opportunities for the development of workforce housing, and that would include a property such as this. On the other hand, there is no benefit to the public by denying the application. The project will make minimal noise. It will not result in any meaningful increase in traffic or result in other harms that the ordinance is designed to prevent. The harm to the applicant of strict enforcement of the ordinance clearly outweighs the nonexistent benefit to the public by a denial of this application. So, again, we believe we've met the third prong of the variance test. We do not believe granting this variance will diminish the, the values of surrounding properties. This project is consistent with the area and the neighborhood. I mean, we're not changing the house one bit. We're just adding another unit within the existing structure. If you look up and down both Dartmouth Street and Oak Street and the adjoining street, which name is escaping me at the moment, there are a lot of multifamily housing within, within this RG district. It's a fairly large district, and I realize that more of the multifamily housing is one street over, but there's multifamily housing on Dartmouth Street, and there's multifamily housing on Oak Street. This project will not directly impact the property to, to the east, right here. Map four twenty-four, one sixty-nine, Lot forty. All the, all the activity for this unit is going to be from Dartmouth Street. It's not going to impact the driveway coming in off of Oak Street, and it's not going to affect the most immediate neighbor on the easterly side. As I've said before, the additional parking area will be harmonious and similar to the other driveways that are on Dartmouth Street. So, finally, the fifth requirement, owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. And it's important to keep in mind the, the requirements regarding hardship. The landowner is not required to establish that the variance is necessary for the property's use. The landowner only has to convince this board that it's a reasonable use. And further, the landowner doesn't have to show that they can't make any other use of the property or is going to be deprived of all beneficial use. And moreover, the question of whether the property could be used differently is not a material consideration when you're evaluating the hardship requirement. So, breaking it down under the statute, the subset, the first subset is no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of those provisions to the property. As I've mentioned a couple of times, we believe the property is unique because it does front on two, two streets. It's a larger property. It's got a building structure that can accommodate four units. It's already a pre-existing non-conforming use. So, I mentioned first of all, under the Laconia ordinance, you are allowed to expand a non-conforming use within a building structure, but that's also the general New Hampshire case law under the Hampton versus Brust case. You have a constitutional right to expand a non-conforming use within the existing building. You can't necessarily, couldn't put an addition on and say, "I want to put another unit in there," but within the existing building, there is a constitutional right to expand a non-conforming use. As I've already mentioned, a couple of examples of other similarly multifamily properties. There's one at Fourteen Oak Street. There's one at Two Twenty-One Pleasant Street. As I indicated, I have some maps of the, I've marked up a couple of the tax maps of the area, if you're interested, showing where some of these other multifamily properties are located, but you live here, so you know where they are. So, let me catch up here. None of the harms that a zoning ordinance is typically designed to prevent, burden some noise, traffic, safety issues, incompatible uses in close proximity would be present in this case. Using the property as a four unit, I think, furthers many of the ordinance's objectives, as already stated multiple times. The proposed uses are reasonable because multifamily use is already a lawful, pre-existing non-conforming use, as I've already said. Changing the garage and story, storage area for another unit does not change the historical use or appearance of the property. The conversion does not infringe on established building setbacks. We've talked about green space before. We've talked about the parking areas being used in a manner similar to other pre-existing driveways on Dartmouth Street. We've talked about other multifamily properties in the neighborhood. We don't think that this project will impact the neighborhood's existing character. And at the end of the day, we think this is going to be an economic benefit for, for the city, and we believe under these circumstances, denying the variance would result in unnecessary hardship. I would ask, respectfully ask this board that, number one, accept the narrative of our application as a statement of facts applicable to this case pursuant to RSA six seventy-six three, subpart one. And at the end of the day, we respectfully request this board to grant the four variances that Mrs. Sal, Ms. Salabashi is requesting to enable the, the fourth dwelling unit at this property. May I answer any questions of the board? I know I've talked fast and repeated myself multiple times.
That's a good presentation, Mr. Britton. My big question is, the new driveway proposed, isn't there a telephone pole and a guide wire right there?
I'm going to let Ms. Salabashi advise regarding any specific properties, but the telephone pole, as I understand it, is down in this area, and the driveway is proposed to be up closer to Oak Street.
Yeah, yeah, this is my concern right there.
And I have a question for Rob. What's the required green space?
I could probably tell you that.
What was it?
Sixty-five.
Sixty, sixty-five percent?
We, we have forty-five percent right now.
Forty-six.
I think it's sixty percent is the general standard, and we presently have forty-six percent.
Forty-six.
And it's been forty-six percent since eighteen ninety-four. And to answer the chair's question specifically regarding the telephone pole, I think this photograph will help justify that. So, the, the new driveway is going to be up.
And this grassy area, not this one. Okay, because I was over there.
Right, it's going to be going in front of, of.
Right.
What is sixty-five Dartmouth Street.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I ask about the, your, your parking spots? The one on Oak Street, you said are two parking spots. Is that tandem?
No, they're stacked. The ones coming from.
They're stacked.
They are.
Yeah, okay. I use the word tandem, but stacked, okay. Yeah, because it looks like a shared driveway with a neighbor next door.
I think there's two driveways side by side there.
Right, but you only own really half of it, so you have two that are stacked.
There's two, two parking spaces stacked on Oak Street. There's two parking space stacked in front of fifty-nine, and these two places, spaces would also.
Yeah, I know that one. It was, okay, yeah, I knew that would be that way. And then on the Dartmouth Street side, we've got what?
They'll be stacked, the, the existing driveway near fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Dartmouth, they're also stacked there. If you were to drive up there tonight, you could see two cars right there, and the new driveway will also be stacked.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Britton? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a seat, sir, and we'd like to ask if there's any members of the public that would like to speak about this matter. Hello. Say your name, please.
My name's Chad Valencourt. I live at 39 Oak Street. It's actually the driveway you were just speaking about. A few points I'd like to hit on the representative. I believe it will severely alter the dynamic of the neighborhood. Right now, that area is mostly single-family homes. When you say multifamily, that area is, you know, you think of multifamily, but in reality, that area is mostly single-family and two-family homes. And most of the two-family homes in that area are owner-occupied. So, and it is, I agree with him, it's a, it's a, an odd parcel of land there, but it's a three-unit property, but when you look at it, it's actually a single-family and a two-family, you know, with the two structures out of there. I actually don't know of any three-family in that direct area on that side of Oak Street or Dartmouth Street, you know, either side of Dartmouth Street. I've been there over twenty years. I've seen three people, pedestrians, get struck in that intersection there. It's a pretty busy intersection with Oak Street being a drive-through area through You know, when there is, when you have three-bedroom units, they do not come with two vehicles. You know, I have a, I have a three-bedroom home, a four-family, we, four of us in a family, and we have four vehicles in the driveway. So that, like, that driveway adjacent to me, there is never two, just two vehicles in there. It's three and four vehicles. And the same thing on the other side of Dartmouth Street. And taking away the little green space that's there now, I believe, you know, it reduces the look of the neighborhood. And like I says, you know, you can't look at it as multifamily. We are a neighborhood of single-family and two-family homes. The concerns I have that it is an investment property. Laconia has problems with its investment properties, you know. The current owner has done a good job keeping up with it, but investment properties change hands, so I'm concerned about the future of it changing hands. And our landlords don't take care of the properties they have now when you drive through town, or take care of the tenants they have. Parking is crowded. I know one of my neighbors has pictures. It's a mess in that area as it is because of this, of that building and the building next to it. Like I said, these properties don't come with two cars. They come with three and four cars. And that concern that I have, the hardship that he referred to, you know, like I says, the owner bought it as an investment property, and you know what you get, you know, and, you know, I know that they get over $2,000 per unit there for three units. That's, you know, getting upwards of seven grand a month, and I just don't see the hardship that's there. I just hope that you listen to the residents here by denying this request, and it's no offense against the current owner, but I have to live there, all right? And we've had problems in the past with tenants there, and we want to keep it, the dynamics of the neighborhood the way it is. I know that a couple of our neighbors can't make it here tonight who also are against this. I know that this is the third time of us coming out here. I did write an email just in case I couldn't make it, and I hope you have it. But, you know, we, the neighborhood wasn't served another letter for this last meeting, so I don't know if some weren't able to come out or not, but just, you know, like, that's... But yeah, I just, like I says, I want to keep the neighborhood the way it is. It's not a neighborhood of multifamily. I consider it single-family and two-family, and I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Anybody else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing us to come this evening. My name is Alice Farrell-Baldock. I have lived at 36 Oak Street for about seventy-five years. We moved in when I was three. The family has owned the house, and I have looked at this lovely property for years. Started out as a two-family home, upstairs and downstairs. All the kids used to go over and play when we were children. This garage you're talking about was a barn, a rickety barn that was open at the bottom to the elements. I'm here, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not a planner, I'm talking from my heart because I am concerned about the people in the building. You're going to take this old barn, and I hope that the planning board will look at it and say, "No, it's not structurally safe." It used to be open at the bottom because the kids used to go there and play all the time. And I just, I can't see it being strong enough to support all the changes they want to do to it unless they start somewhere to reconstruct it. I have nothing against people moving in. I'm all for it. I mean, we need places for people to live. It's prime property. We're near all the schools and the playground and, you know, the beautiful park, but now you're going to take away the green grass that I've been looking at for seventy-five years and going to take that green grass away and make it asphalt. How is that going to attract a family with children? It's a very busy street. Oak Street is, when I was a kid, you could play on the street. We used to play baseball out there. Now you can't hardly cross the street safely because people speed to get down to that traffic light before it turns red, you know, you've got to get there before it turns. So it is not a safe area. Because of the school, the traffic comes down Dartmouth Street a lot more than it used to, and we see people run that stop sign all the time in front of my house, which is on the other side of the street of theirs. Traffic-wise with cars, it might not be so busy, but in the summertime when the children are going to go into the park, it's extremely busy. I'm just worried that right now, when they plow the snow, it blocks the vision when you're coming up Dartmouth Street to go to Tremont. You have to inch out and look around that snowbank. Where are they going to put the snow? If you take away the grass and put parking in there, you're going to have to put the snow someplace. Where is it going to go? And yes, there is that nice little telephone pole with the guide wires. It is there, you know, and it's wide. If you ever take a look at it, it's about the space of a car. Again, I'm not looking to badmouth anybody or anything. I'm just concerned about the people, even the people in the house. I'm old. My house is old. It's drafty. When they start their cars across the street, the fumes come into my bedroom, which is in the front of the house. You know, their house is there, mine's here across the street. The fumes come into the house. What's going to happen to the people that live, you know, in the front of the building where the picture windows are if you put a couple of cars there? No, you don't have to start your car early with the new cars, but people are going to do it. They're out of habit. I'm worried about the safety of the people in the home even. But those are my thoughts, and again, I thank you for allowing us to come and, you know, our view.
Thank you for coming in, Alice.
Thank you.
Hello, sir.
Hi, my name is, my name is Daniel Nye, and I'm here with my wife, Mary. We live at 23 Oak Street, which is the yellow house with a white trim directly across, yes, that's the one right there, on the opposite corner. We also have our driveway on the Dartmouth Street side directly across from the present driveway that is designed for the four stacked vehicles per the current situation with the landlord. Directly to that driveway is the telephone pole that was referenced with the guide wire. It is a, it, it's a detriment to anybody parking out, ourselves included. I'm here to say that the single greatest challenge and obstacle to the present landlord's request of the variance that it will not impact public safety is the fact that we're talking about a school zone. We're talking about multiple single-family properties that have young children that walk to and from school every day down Dartmouth Street, cross Oak Street, to go to school and then return home each day. Now, with all due respect, I would never begrudge somebody an opportunity to enhance their well-being, but the landlord is an absentee landlord. She does not live in the community. She is not here and is not able to police the parking situation. And what happens is, as Mr. Valencourt has referenced, two vehicles become three, three vehicles become four. Oh, we're going to have a party. Now we've got six and seven vehicles of people coming to visit for a party. Where do they park? They park up and down Dartmouth Street, and they park up and down Oak Street, making it virtually impossible to not come to the stop sign at the intersection and need to pull out into oncoming traffic in order to see if there is any traffic coming east and west up Oak Street, and that's merely just to enter the street. I have multiple pictures, my wife has pictures here, of vehicles that are parked on Oak Street and on Dartmouth Street. Not only are they in the street on the corner obstructing entry two and entrance on two from Oak Street to Dartmouth Street, but they're parked facing the wrong way. And it's, we're talking about the safety, security, and welfare of the people in that immediate community, of which there are multiple families with young children.
So I don't even know where to get started because this is so upsetting. We live directly across from where the construction is going to happen, and already there are so many cars that are parked on the street because there isn't enough room in either of the driveways, on Dartmouth Street or Oak Street. They're all up and down the street, not only at this property, but the one that's right next to it, that there is no place for anyone else to park, let alone children trying to cross the street when they're on their bicycles or on their skateboards. It is a safety situation, let alone, it's just a massive eyesore. This is not the neighborhood that we moved into where the people who owned these rental properties lived in those houses and then had their renters that they could watch police be neighborly with. These are landlords that do not even live in our state, and they don't know what's going on in their own homes that we have to live across the street from.
The situation, and you can reference the police records as such, that I believe it was Friday evening, a neighbor next to us who couldn't be here this evening called the police because of the number of vehicles parked on Dartmouth Street. I came home from umpiring a baseball game, and the police officer literally had to park across my driveway, preventing me from getting in my own driveway in order to have a place to address the current situation. As I said, we're not against somebody pursuing the American dream and the opportunity to have a status of life that they seek, but this is at tremendous expense. Our neighbors, Alice, who spoke before, they're an older couple, they're limited in their movements. She referenced the snowbanks. And that doesn't even count when the cars are pulled out onto the street during the wintertime with the snowbanks. Those nice wide streets that Council referred to, being able to accommodate, become significantly smaller with snowbanks and parked vehicles. I haven't even talked about this number of school buses that go up and down Oak Street every single day. So we, I think, without, you know, further ado, that's really where our concerns lie.
We can't, we cannot strongly suggest that you do not vote for this enough. We live there. They don't.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan and wife, for coming in. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak about this?
Does Mr. Britton want to offer rebuttal to any of his comments?
Mr. Britton?
Thank you, Marja. You can see, sir, there's a lot of opposition from the neighbors about parking, and the photos that they presented, the median between the road and the sidewalk, there's not even grass growing.
May I see those photos, sir? If I'm not mistaken, I think these photos are showing parking on Oak Street, not Dartmouth Street. For example, this photo right here, there's a yellow line in the median there. I'm quite sure all those cars are on Oak Street. So we're talking about a proposal concerning Dartmouth Street, and I have heard the testimony. I don't live here. You folks live here, but I've driven around that neighborhood a couple of times now, both for the last meeting and again for this meeting, and the only two cars that are parked adjacent to my client's property are in the driveway for 59 Dartmouth Street. There are no cars parked along Dartmouth Street, and if, I couldn't tell from the testimony if they were saying that all these cars that were parked on Dartmouth Street were on my client's property or Dartmouth Street in general. But I do believe that my, from my observations, there's two cars in that driveway there tonight. There were no other cars parked on Dartmouth Street adjacent to my client's property. I believe we have satisfied the requirements for variance, and the overarching fact here is that this is a permitted non-conforming use, and the City of Laconia ordinance specifically provides that a non-conforming use can be expanded within an existing structure. A five percent reduction in the lawn, I do not think is a significant reduction in green space when you have a non-conforming green space to begin with. My client can't control how the city plows snow. So I hear their concerns, but I think that we have satisfied our burden to meet the requirements for variance, for the four variances, and I respectfully request that you approve Ms. Celabashi's application. And if you have further questions for me, I'm happy to entertain them.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thanks again.
One quick moment, Chad.
So when you talk about tandem spaces, these are all tandem spaces, and when you have, let's, they're limiting it to two vehicles, right? So even if you do have two vehicles, what happens when you have tandem spaces? You leave one in the street at all times, okay? Please, listen to your residents. We live there, and we're there every day. We know the parking situation. When you drive around the block once a month, you don't notice it. The snow load, we're not talking snow from the street, we're talking the driveway. That, now you've got a lot of snow and you've got bigger driveways to put snow. You don't have enough green space as it is. That lot has very little green space now, and to take what little green space you have, it makes a difference in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Very good, sir. Alrighty.
Going to close the public.
I will close the public meeting at this time and discussion amongst the board.
I'm very concerned that they are not meeting, and this is, I know Mr. Britton talks about the building, and the building is, you know, a non-conforming building, and you can have development within a non-conforming building. Very true. The parking bothers me because according to Article 8, Section 235-48A... page one eighteen in the handbook, only one in two family dwellings can back out of a driveway. If you have a multifamily use, and they're already a three-family building, so they're already in violation of this ordinance. And then they want to add another unit and have more parking, violate the ordinance, which says when you have multifamily, the parking has to be designed so that without resorting to extraordinary movements, the vehicles may exit the parking area without backing into a public street. Oak Street is a busy street. This proposed driveway is close to the corner. It, in my estimation, this is a violation, they're already in violation of that ordinance. I don't want to see further violation of that ordinance. Oak Street, the driveway's gonna be on the corner, I think this is a safety issue. I'm not in favor.
I feel the board is in general consensus. Any comments?
I have a couple of questions, Director. Is their cover sheet, is thi, is this permission enough for him to speak for the owner? I know we've dealt with this many times over the years. Is this sufficient for that? I just wanted to check. Marcia, I'm kind of in, I'm, I'm in the same place as you relative to the parking, but I, maybe I don't have such passion as you do because I do think that the planning will cover that. But I'm, I'm, I'm more than, I, it, it is not a multifamily community. They are single-family and at most two-family. It's already a third family and so I'm just, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm stuck already on the density part of it. So for me, that is, that is, that is part of that there. Also, yeah, I'm okay with the, the green space. Ah, that's tough. Oh, Director, one other question. The attorney or the presenter made a, a statement about that it's in a New Hampshire statute that allows a, for an expansion, I'm, I'm, I'm probably gonna myrtleize his words, but expansion of a non, pre-existing non-conforming. This is the first I've ever heard of this.
Uh, it's also referenced in our zoning ordinance. We do specifically state that in our zoning ordinance that you're allowed to expand in unused spaces of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. So as long as the building, they're not expanding the footprint, they would be allowed to expand within the structure.
So how is that intersecting with what Marcia said? In the sense that, so it, the building can, but the parking cannot?
So Marcia referenced the use, but she's, she's talking about the other variance or the other section that they're referencing for the parking and the safety aspect of backing out onto the public ground.
Understood, okay.
That, that, that is separate from the variance for the expansion of the non, non-conforming use.
And but, I mean, in my opinion, most of the things that the residents brought up are things that are gonna be handled at the planning board level. If this were approved, handle it at planning board and that's just, it's more of a public, a public policing type, type of thing. It's not necessarily something that's under the approval of the zoning board. I know, I'm, I'm still stuck in the density. I'm, I'm kind of a no at this point.
Does this meet the minimum number of parking spots for, for dwellings on a, on a property? Like what, what's the minimum number of parking spots?
So for the multifamily, they'd have to have one point five for the use. What was it, what was it? They need six total spots so that they would meet their requirement with the, with the approval of the additional driveway.
Were RG, is that gonna, is, is this, is that dens, the parking number going to change coming up at any point in the future? There's nothing on the docket at this point.
Is that a state level that's?
No, no, here.
So, so there's no proposals right now to change our existing zoning ordinance and the parking requirements we have already established. There, there are a plethora of state bills going through right now that are changing a lot of things at the local level. But that's at the state level, that.
That's fair, that's a fair point. I thought that there was a discussion earlier, earlier this year.
There was some discussion earlier this year with another, another proposed state law change with parking. But we are, we found out we, we met the requirement.
Okay, fair point. And what's the number, Scott? Would you say?
Six total.
And stacked parking counts towards that? Interesting.
So then if this were to be released to planning, then they're gonna be able to find a way to at least make the math work with parking?
So, if the zoning board approved all of the, approved the application, they would then have to go before planning board, correct?
For sure.
Uh, for a multifamily site plan. Or at least for an amendment of it or an existing multifamily site.
So just to be clear, we've got four things before, the fir, four things before. So the first one is density, then green space, then parking, and then the, the, the conversion of the building itself. What's the last one? We're looking at four.
Yep, there's two parking requirements. They're both referenced on the top of the.
Oh, I see, I got you. Yeah, 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 I got you. I'm still stuck in the density for me.
No, I, I agree. I, but I, I think they could get by with the density maybe easier than for me for the parking and the safety issue that, that it creates. But, but I'm with you on, on the density as well.
The new driveway is right on the corner.
It is.
Dartmouth Street also.
So there would have to be a curb cut, some other things. Well, if you look at the, the pictures that are there, the people are parking parallels to the road. They're not parking in.
There's no grass growing.
They're actually parking on.
The grass.
No, they're parking on the sidewalk. Which is not an unheard of thing here in the neighborhood.
Do we have to break them down one, one by one?
No, since they submitted it as one application, you're gonna vote on it as one application.
I'd like to hear a motion.
I make a motion to deny application ZB two oh two five dash five zero, which was asking for a variance from Article six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-three, Article six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-six, Article eight, Section two sixty-five dash forty-eight A, Article eight, Section two sixty-five dash forty-eight E. I have to go through all five. Okay, so, here we go. Have to pull out my cheat sheet, if you don't mind. Oh, I can probably do off of their application.
I have one here.
The first one is that it would not alter the character of the neighborhood or propose a, even if we talk about the character of the neighborhood, granted there are two-family homes, maybe there's a three-family home in that neighborhood, but it basically is not, certainly got homes with four families in it. So it would alter the character of the neighborhood to go up to four families. And also with criteria number one, it can't be a safety issue either. And as we've discussed amongst the board, we think by adding extra cars and parking close to the corner, there is a safety issue. So I would contend in the board is in agreement that it does not meet criteria one in regards to that. And if you don't meet criteria one, you do not meet criteria two, which means that it is not in meeting with the spirit of the ordinance. Criteria three. Granting the variance would do substantial justice. Right here, the justice is to the neighborhood and the safety of the people that live in the neighborhood and walk the sidewalks. So, uh, I think the public outweighs the need for the applicant in that case. Number four, if the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. There is no evidence either way. And number five, the unnecessary hardship. The conditions of the property, I could see that perhaps that garage area could turn into another unit. But again, it's too much population for the area. And so perhaps there, there really isn't, there really isn't a hardship on the property, which is what you have to meet. And, and I don't think the re, the use is reasonable, given the fact that you would be increasing the density, you would be increasing safety concerns in that neighborhood. So it's probably not a reasonable use of that property. And for those reasons, those, that's what I'm gonna offer to deny this application.
Thank you, Marcia, well said. I have a motion.
Thank you. I will second.
Thank you, Jane. Any further discussion? On favor of denial?
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, neighbors. And Mr. Breton. Next up on the agenda is thirty-two Carver Street. Is that applicant here tonight?
Yes.
Hello, folks.
How are you?
Tell us how we can help you. You wanna put up a chimney? It's a couple inches too close to the neighbor's house.
We're looking to seek a variance for a chimney chase that we're planning to add during a renovation project we have going on this summer.
And how much intrusion is it?
I think it's like four feet.
Not even like.
No, not even.
I think it's about three feet. Yeah. It's not a lot at all.
We're very close to all of our neighbors and our property lines, so.
You went for an application, they said you had to come to the zoning board and ask for a variance, okay.
We previously actually asked for a variance, I think in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, but we, it was approved.
It was granted, yes.
But the project didn't.
You snooze, you lose.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So you're gonna do the renovation?
Yes.
Very good. Any questions from the board for these folks?
About the public in that decision?
I'll have to sit them down first.
Okay. I don't think so. I have none.
I don't have any.
Very good. Have a seat and we have to ask if there's any neighbors that would like to speak for or against the application. Thank you, Scott, for noticing that. Anybody would like to talk about the chimney addition? No? Okay, I have no issues with it, let's.
I make a proposal, we accept, is that's okay? Make a proposal, we approve the variance, number two oh two five zero five one for thirty-two Carver Street. Granting of the variance is not contrary to the public interest because chimneys are necessary. The spirit of the orange, ordinance is absor, is observed as it is responsible with the home. Granting of the various does substantial justice because it improves the home in a mechanically safe way. And there, number four, there is no evidence plus or minus to adding or detracting from the value of the home. Unnecessary hardship, you need a chimney. I have complete.
I have a motion.
I second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Build that chimney.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. Alrighty. We have twenty-eight seventy Parade Road. They're seeking a special exception to allow short-term lodging. Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Call your name for the record, please.
Sure, my name is John Pershadi. Thank you so much for having me. Just get my notes here. I promise I'll be brief. I did submit a, a application, which I believe is the criteria application for Section seventy C two, which kind of breaks down all of those. And I apologize for the font size, I am not as tech savvy as my peers. But I'm happy to go through all of that, all of those answers as well. But just before we do all of that, my father is the property owner, Majid Pershadi. He could not be here tonight, is recovering from a procedure, so I hope he'll accept me in his stead. The, we purchased the property this past January. It's a three-family home. It's approximately about eleven hundred forty-four square feet of living space on a two-acre lot, Parade Road. The, the home is a bit recessed from the street as well as from the other adjoining lots. So you got a good kind of buffer zone there. The hope is that, or the intention is to use it as a vacation and retirement kind of rental. My dad's looking to retire soon and looking to spend more time at a time instead of just a day or a week. Maybe stay for a few weeks or a month up here. And this place is fantastic for that purpose. Additionally, we'd like to be able to kind of mitigate some of the cost of maintenance and upkeep by being able to do short-term rentals. The benefit of that being that with a short-term rental, you can still use the property when you want to and not have a permanent tenant that you would have to, you know, work around or a long-term tenant that you would have to displace, particularly when we're considering for, the reason it's a three-bedroom place and not a smaller joint is just because my family likes to vacation together. We've got brothers, sisters, aunts, uncles that all like to come up at the same time. And so this kind of lets us all do that, be together. It's also intended as like a bit of a generational investment in the area, something that we hope to pass on, or he hopes to pass on, I should say, eventually. Looking at the ordinance, I believe it does qualify, meeting all the criteria that you would need for a short-term rental anyway. The exception we're looking for is that, I believe, because the ordinance requires it be owner occupied for about a hundred and fifty days out of the year, we've only had the place for about four months. I haven't had even a chance to demonstrate that use yet or even kind of get the feel for it, as well as considering it for more of an upcoming retirement rather than immediate retirement or anything like that. To that end of, forgive me, to the end of using the place as a short-term rental and making sure it does not affect adversely any of the neighbors or anything like that, we do have a local caretaker that we know who's here tonight, Jennifer, to help us kind of keep an eye on the place. I personally will manage any of the renters that would come, ensuring that none of them would be, I mean, we would literally say, no parties, nothing crazy, limit the number of people and not to cause a ruckus. We have installed security cameras on the place, so we can see at any given time if there are like too many cars. Jennifer lives right in Guilford and is easy and quick to respond to stuff if we need to, though we hope that would be very minimal. Yeah, that's the kind of summation of it. I'm happy to answer your questions. I do have more details in all of the answers I provided on the application, but I feel like you may have all heard it before at this point, so.
Very well said, sir. Any questions for this?
Just to clarify, you, you said it's a three-unit home?
It's a three-bedroom.
Okay.
One home.
That's fine. I heard unit.
Sorry about that. I may have misspoke, sorry.
Where do you live?
Swampscott, Massachusetts.
Okay. And so, how, this property, how was it used prior to your purchasing it?
I don't know, I believe the previous owner lived there.
Okay, as a full-time residential unit.
I, I'm afraid I personally can't speak to his use, but yeah. He may have rented it out, I, I honestly don't know. But it is a, it is a home, it's not like a, a big structure, multi-unit, anything, and we're not planning to do any changes to it at all.
How is it deeded?
It's RR two, which.
I mean, is it in your name or LLC?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in a trust, a family trust.
Okay, family trust. So what prevents you from making it an owner-occupied, uh, short-term rental?
Oh, simply we just, as my father was saying, that he plans to come up when he retires more often. And living in Massachusetts, we're just not prepared to say exactly it's gonna be these months or these days yet.
He can't guarantee a hundred and fifty days a year right now.
Right, we haven't had a chance to really use it that much yet to demonstrate.
Very good. Any other questions? Alright, sir, if you'll have a seat, I have to ask if there's any neighbors that would like to give up public input on this matter?
If you don't mind, sir, Mr. Chair. Counselor Cheney called me yesterday evening. He is a director butter. He is currently in the hospital and unable to attend this evening's meeting. His wife did come in to pick up a copy of the agenda item for this. However, she has decided to stay at his bedside this evening while he's in surgery. And as I said, they're direct butters and he is opposed to the application because he feels like it would change the character of the neighborhood and not be consistent with the district that it is within, as it's in the agricultural district. As he is a director butter, he, he feels it is just not an appropriate use for that zoning district.
Okay, thank you for those input from Counselor. Anybody else? Okay. I think everybody's aware of my stance on short-term rentals is.
Do you want to close the public portion?
I'll close the public meeting and discussion amongst the board.
The house is pretty remote.
If done responsibly, I'm all in favor of it.
Marcia, do we rehearse with it? What if, what the, the, if it is not owner occupied?
Marcia, do we hear something? What if, if it is not owner occupied, what are the requirements after that? I'm just saying, just for the public interest, the file?
Oh, that, A, that it's a use that is allowed in this zone with a special exception, which it, it is, and then, you know, it's not gonna increase a safety problem, or it's not gonna bring about more, you know, fire police and all that good stuff. But it had, one of the criteria was, has it ever been used in this pla- way before it has not, so...
It's a single-family home.
Right, but no, but like if somebody had used it as that prior to, that is something to consider. Then the applicant can offer convincing evidence that granting the special exception of the property includes a general community benefit that rises above that of the financial gains of the applicant. Is there a general community benefit that rises above the fact that he's gonna make a profit by renting it out?
Well, I believe there is.
People can come and stay?
They go to restaurants?
What I'm saying, that's for you to, to...
I'm, I'm in fa- I'm in favor, and simply for me, you know, with all the stuff that we go through with STLs here, this is just a remote location accessible from Parade, accessible from the highway, and so that's kind of where I stand on it.
Well, and the other thing is you've got another one coming up on that same neighborhood, asking for the same thing, so...
Not necessarily the same.
Well, not necessarily the same, but...
Or the same zone.
Oh, it is in the, New Hope isn't, isn't in the same zone, is this one?
It is.
Oh, it is in the same zone? Okay. Quite the same.
It's a different, it's a different thing.
Yeah, oh, okay.
So, I'm in favor. I, just generally, I, I, I believe the same as you. People bring, brings people into the community, and they spend money, and they participate.
I firmly believe short-term rentals are beneficial to the community if done responsibly.
Yep, exactly. And the rules are in zoning, that they have to manage it in that responsible way, and if they do that...
It's, it's simple things, sir, like the garbage cans get put out on the wrong day, too many cars parked there. That's what makes the neighbors upset.
Yep.
Like you say, no parties. If done responsibly, it's great. It's good for the community. If it's irresponsible, it's a detriment to the neighborhood. Please come up, please.
You, you can't, because you can't, because you closed the public, and if you open it up again, then you just can't do that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I can't say, number, number five, you could put some special provisions in, into your, your acceptance of it, if you wanted to, I mean, there's a...
But it's already there in the zone, what they have to do, though.
No, but I'm just saying, when you grant a special exception, there is an opportunity, if the board felt you wanted to add some special provisions to, saying yes, you can do that, is all I'm saying.
The neighbors have to be given the emergency number of the young lady in Guilford to call for any issues, things like that.
It's all there on the, on the, on the, the permit, am I correct? It's all there. And if they, and if they don't follow the route, follow the directives, then the permit gets rescinded.
Make a motion, Richard.
I make a motion that we approve the speci- special exception for, hang on a second, two oh two five dash zero five two for a STL at the Parade Road location. I've never do- I don't think I've ever done a...
Special exception?
A special exception.
It's the same right on the back of the application.
Okay, yeah, I gotcha.
Just for the looking at it.
The use is, okay, the use is specifically authorized. The requested use will not increase demand from municipal services. The special provisions are set forth in the chapter and in the STL permit. The requested use will not create any hazards to health, safety, or general welfare. And the request does meet the requirement that he has put forth convincing evidence that he, they will follow the rules of the STL. I'm complete.
Thank you, Richard. I have a motion.
I will second.
Thank you, Jane. Any further discussion? Marcia, want to say anything?
No, I don't want to say anything.
All in favor? Opposed? Please do it responsibly, sir.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Motion passes. Alright, moving right along. I have eight forty-nine Main Street. They want to put up an electronic messaging center. Hello?
Hello, good evening. My name is Mark Roman. I'm with the American Legion. Couple of my American Legionnaires are with me this evening, Wayne McLean, the commander, and also Earl Beal, our finance officer, three of us here this evening. This is a simple request, and we will be incredibly brief. This is just a request to change the current sign that we have from a static display sign, one that requires someone to constantly change and update the message, to an LED sign, which would be, of course, a dynamic display. The sign would be in the same location as the current one. You'll see in the packets that there are si- pictures of signs that we currently have as well as the proposed sign. The proposed sign actually is just a smaller footprint than the current sign that we have in square footage sign, or in square footage. And we already have electric out there that lights that sign, so nothing changes with that. It would just be, allow us to do a couple of things. One is to better communicate with the public on what's going on with veterans' issues, things that we're doing for veterans, fundraisers, and so on. And it would also allow us to update and change messaging via computer, which we cannot do now. And we rely on volunteers, and of course, like every association, diminishing members. We don't have members that can go out there and change that sign all the time. So, we have bingo for the community every Thursday night, the sign gets updated when we have that. Meat raffles, other things for veterans, and we update that constantly. So, our idea here is to obviously take a sign that is somewhat old and update, and be able to update this via computer.
Is it gonna be flashing on and off?
It would not be flashing like things fading in and that. It would, it would change the message. For example, if we have bingo Thursday night, it would come on the screen, say bingo Thursday night. Open, doors open at four-thirty, bingo at six-thirty. And then another message, meat raffle on Friday, come out and support veterans, or whatever we're doing.
My concern is with the street turning into, like the Tilton outlets, you know, with...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, everybody is going with, I mean, obviously LED signs for a lot of reasons. One, they're more visible. You get community messaging out there, but also allows you to update it by computer, so...
Any questions from the board? No questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'll have to ask for any public input at this time. Anybody like to speak for or against this application? Cretors?
No, I am not finding why.
Okay. What's our regulations on the signs?
It's not, it's not allowed in this zone.
I, I think what he's asking, though, is what requirements do we have for electronic message boards, like, like requirements and messages? So we do have requirements on how bright they're allowed to be, and that it can be brighter during the day, but then at dusk it needs to be reduced in brightness, like to five hundred nits. And that the message can only change, I believe, once every three minutes. There's some requirements to it. So you're not trying to distract drivers.
Right.
So we do have performance standards that they would still need to follow.
Because that is a concern of mine, is, you know, I don't want a Las Vegas-type atmosphere along that road.
Are there any other messaging boards on that stretch of road?
Electronic ones?
Yeah, electronic ones.
I couldn't find any.
Not, not that I, not that I'm aware of.
No, I don't think so.
I, I went into the chart for signs, and I kept, I couldn't find any criteria or anything. And so I'm saying to Scott, I'm missing it for this zone, I'm missing information. He said, that's because it's not allowed, Marcia, and I'm like, that's why I'm not finding anything, because it's not allowed. So therefore, I can't even...
It's on the table, it's just...
Does Meredith's savings?
It hasn't, and specifying that it's not allowed, and so therefore, it would be hard for even me to visualize what they should be doing.
So is there, maybe this is ancillary to this discussion, but is there a reason why this zone has denied electronic signs?
So, I think that would require, like, I do not have the answer for that off the top of my head. I would assume that it would have to do with the type of zoning district it's allowed in. Dynamic display signs are only permitted in the commercial resort district,
Gotcha.
which I would speculate would have to do with trying to promote gross business that was of, of that variety that you want to have that kind of sign for.
So he's asking to put a, an electronic sign, a lighted electronic sign. I mean, I completely agree with the, the use of it. It's, it's great. However, it's the only, it would be the only one there, and it's not...
Doesn't Meredith's Savings Bank have a lit sign?
They do, and, and I do want to point out that the vast majority of businesses now are not doing static signs. That it's kind of an older technology, everybody is going to LCD and, and the newer technologies. So, you're, you're really never gonna see a static display board come back in. It's all gonna be dynamic.
Yeah, for sure.
And we do allow dynamic by special exception. But when this was developed back, what, what year was the signs done? Two thousand nineteen, eighteen was probably the last time the, it was updated for the, the table.
Oh, in the last.
And it would have been before, really, LCDs were coming out. And you would have permitted, and it is permitted by special exception, in the district for the static one. So, if this had been more of a, probably a current ordinance, it probably would have allowed that dynamic by special exception.
Fair point.
But because it's so old...
And, and technology has increased so much that they're not, they're not the obnoxious ones of the past.
Well, they can be obnoxious.
Anything can be obnoxious, but... Our sign ordinance is a little outdated.
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I think if you're gonna allow this kind of thing somewhere, I think Main Street's probably where you would allow it. Makes sense to me.
Water Street Cafe has one, and it's not obnoxious at all.
Right.
Water Street has?
Yeah, they change it.
And, and I, I do believe Meredith Village Savings Bank has one, just down the road.
I was thinking, does the, what's Stafford Oil, do they have something out front?
I believe the, what is it, the Veterans', is it?
Yeah, the Water Street Cafe one's very nice.
Just recall the FFW?
The FFW also has one.
For a little small insert.
Okay, maybe that's what I'm thinking of, okay.
But still, yes, yep, you're correct.
The Community Center out in the Weers is also putting one up right now. And I think there's another application you're hearing tonight for another one, of the same type of, of sign.
Laconia High School has one.
Laconia High School has one, but they're a city entity, so they're exempt from that.
I'm kind of in favor. I think it's, it's the way of the future, and if it's done responsibly and dimming in the night time, I'm kind of in favor of that, and that's already in...
And that, that's already written in there. The ordinance probably needs to be updated in other ways to kind of make it more current with the last ten years.
You mean, do you have a car dealership that has like twenty illuminated signs outside their building, like something like that?
How do we make it non-obtrusive? How, you know, like so much light power, or you call them, uh...
But it's in, it's in the description. If he follows, if they followed the criteria for an electronic messaging center that's in the ordinance, I don't think we have to worry.
So, there is performance criteria already, when they get their sign permit, they have to provide everything, and it has to have certain capabilities to meet, such as the dimming of it and the messages, and the frequency of changes.
Now, why is it not a commercial, allowed in this commercial zone?
This was done way before we even had urban commercial. So thi- this is, I don't know, I don't know when the last time the sign ordinance was updated.
So, I'm kind of thinking it's okay, but I don't want to open up a can of worms here that...
But I think in this particular zone, if anything's in this particular zone, I think that's what the wave of the future is going to be anyway. You know, it's not like we're allowing it in a different zone, but in this zone, I think it's very appropriate.
And there are multiple illuminated signs, static signs along that stretch of road.
Yeah.
And it's, it will be the future, and is it, maybe what's it's gonna do, it's just gonna kick the can forward to say, look, let's update the...
And, and it might be worth making the recommendation to planning board to pursue updating the sign ordinance.
Alright. It's for a good cause.
Definitely.
American Legion.
Well, it's not the FFW, I mean, come on.
Let's hear a motion.
Richard, you gonna make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the variance for four, for eight forty-nine Main Street, two oh two five dash zero five three. For signs. Granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest. Granting the variance is within the spirit of the ordinance. Granting of the variance does do substantial justice to the applicant. No evidence is given that surrounding property values would be increased or diminished. And relative to hardship, makes it a heck of a lot easier to get your message out. I'm complete.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Make a nice sign, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Next we have South Town Shores, Surrey Lane. Hello?
Hi. Um, our home is actually in Long Bay, not in South Town.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Rachel Haven. My husband Brett Haven could not be here with me this evening. So it's just me.
What would you like to do there?
We are interested in doing, I guess, a short-term rental Airbnb in our home that we have. I realize that right now we currently have current board members and previous board members who are probably gonna be opposing our application this evening. And we are just hoping to be able to allow the, sorry, the, to be awarded the same, allow rentals within our community provided. Sorry, I'm really nervous.
Hey, just be relaxed, we're all friends here.
Okay, great. The board has approved the short-term rentals before in the past. My husband was previously on the board as well. And we're just hoping to be provided the same guidelines to be approved for a short-term rental. My husband was a board member as well, and was, during this approval process, and we know the expectations of what the board and the neighborhood is gonna require. We fully want to be in all of those expectations, follow the guidelines for it as well, too. And we just want to share our home with people who want to come and visit the Laconia area, see the lake, and just enjoy the vacation area that we have here. And I'll have a big guideline book of the expectations that I do have of the rentals through Airbnb that we've rented before in other places. I will be approving each of the renters with the specific guidelines of no parties. If it's like a group of guys that are twenty-one and want to stay at our house, that's immediately a denial, that they will not be able to rent our home. Yeah, sorry. I'm sorry.
Thought we had a letter from the board that was opposing, they said they had a thirty-day minimum, is that correct?
I believe it's a seven-day minimum.
Seven-day minimum.
So, and we will be renting for a week following this, all the same proper guidelines that the board has approved. We're not gonna do anything shorter than seven days.
I, I'm sorry, I wasn't...
Any questions for Ms. Haven?
You're in Long Bay. What do, what do the tenants of your association say about this, again?
It has been approved to be able to do a short-term rental within seven days. And we plan on renting from Friday to Friday to follow those specific guidelines that were approved and following exactly what they say to do. I don't want to do anything less or longer. If somebody wants to say longer, great, but...
But your association says it's okay to do for seven days, so why does she have to be here? It's a private community.
She still has to follow the zoning ordinance and still...
Okay, alright.
Any other questions for Ms. Haven? Have a seat, ma'am, and we'll see if there's any neighbors that would like to talk. Yes, sir, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Frank Woods. I'm president...
Good evening. My name is Frank Woods. I'm president of the Willows Association within Long Bay. Uh, I just wanna clarify a few things. In two thousand and twenty-three, Long Bay passed a thirty-day minimum rental requirement. It is part of our declaration. It has been filed. Uh, we can give you a copy of it, a copy of it was also sent to the board. So I don't know where they're getting their information about seven days. Her husband actually was a board member when the thirty days was passed. So our, our association, as you said, private community association rules stipulate thirty-day consecutive minimum rental. So I'll leave the board with that, thank you.
Thank you for giving that, Mr. Wood. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Susan Riley. I live at nineteen Surrey Lane. I am the treasurer of Willow Pond Homeowners Association, which is where this house resides, as well as the treasurer of Long Bay Homeowners Association. Both associations have a thirty-day minimum consecutive day rental. I believe Scott Pelchat, I believe the board, uh, president, sent you a copy of our, um, declaration of covenants that was recorded at Belknap County on November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, that was from, um, Mark Bodenstot, the president.
Yeah.
And that was, um, Long Bay doesn't oppose rentals, it's just thirty consecutive days. We all know when we go on vacation for a week, we try to embrace everything, and that, we invite our friends, we invite our families. This house is actually on a cul-de-sac. There are seven homes. It's dead center, three on one side, three on the other. They're in the center. One of the butters is here, and I believe you also received a letter from one of the other butters opposing it as well. It's a small street, um, six of us live there, that's our permanent homes, and Long Bay, I believe, we supersede city, 'cause we filed this declaration that we would, that even if you did award it, we could still fight it.
Right. If you would like me to clarify for that?
Please.
So, yes, we have a zoning ordinance, and they have covenants and bylaws. We do not have jurisdiction over theirs, um, and our rules would not supersede their rules. We are not, we do not enforce their rules, so if you were to approve this, then they would still have to meet their requirements, or they would face civil action between the homeowners association and the private owner. So we don't get involved in the civil matter.
Right. condo rules don't affect us.
We're actually a home, HOA, we're not a condo. All right, thank you.
Please come up.
Hi, I'm, uh, Matthew Miller. I'm twenty-one, Surrey Lane, uh, immediate a butter to the property. We've lived there for fourteen years. We're full-time, twelve months on a year residents, retired there. We really don't wanna live next to a hotel. This is a very quiet residential community. There are no re- short-term rentals currently in our community, our HOA, as a majority of our HOA has voted against such a thing. Should you want to override all of us, I would still plead as a direct a butter, uh, please don't diminish the quiet nature of our residence, the extra traffic, the nature of the traffic, the noise, the comings and the goings. It's a small cul-de-sac, there's limited parking, or we have a circle that we're gonna, we have children riding bikes around. The people in our neighborhood understand who's there, where the kids are, a lot of pedestrian traffic. People that come for short-term don't understand any of that. They're in a hurry, they're blasting in and out. You would significantly diminish the quality of our residence if you should approve this.
Thank you, Matt.
For the record, I think we should point out that we have received, um, a letter from a Mark Bodenstab who is objecting. We have also a letter from a Peter Dreyfus of twenty, I should have said, I should have said the the address. I'll go back, I'll go back. Matt Mark Bodenstein, does he give me his address? Oh, he's from twenty-three Surrey Lane, right? No, he's not from twenty-six. He's objecting.
He's the president of Long Bay Homeowners Association.
Thank you. The president of Long Bay submitted a letter of objection. Peter Dreyfus of twenty-seven Surrey Lane submitted a letter of objection, just for the record.
Any other public comment? I guess you could come back up.
Less nervous now. Um, so obviously my neighbors are opposing. There's not gonna be any extra parking. We have a very big, uh, to extra driveway with parking. I don't think that there's gonna be people driving in and out of craziness that's there. We do plan on approving all of the people who will be renting, having a full rulebook and a guidebook of what would be allowed at our home. It will not be a hotel of just a revolving door of people. Um, we don't plan on renting the home full-time. Things have changed with my daughter. She's in school, and her, she's eight and a half, so she's the one that actually that rides around the cul-de-sac because there's, she's the youngest one probably in the neighborhood right now at the time. And she's home. We live on the seacoast. We live in Hampton Falls, so we're not too terribly far. During, up until her school years, we've been living there probably more than half of the year, going back and forth between our home here at the lake and the farm. Um, we're just wanting to share our home with other people who wanna come and see the Lakes region area. I will be very, very, um, decisive on who would be applying to come and stay at our home, because it's my home. I don't want it to be trashed by some of the people who might be at a hotel. Um, I will be very particular with approving who could stay or not stay.
But you're aware that the HOA will go crazy on you if we approve this.
They, um, my husband was previous on the bo- previously on the board and kind of butted heads with some of the others. A couple of the other people who have opposed are actually not in my neighborhood, and they're, it's Long Bay, there's a couple of people from the Willows, which is a separate neighborhood, um, within, so although I respect their opposition to it, they're not directly near us. And it's our home, and just wanting to share it with others.
Very good, Ms. Haven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I guess I'm just getting confused between who's, uh, is it Willow is not your HOA?
No, ma'am. So we're in Long Bay, and then there's separate neighborhoods within Long Bay. We live in Willow Pond. Um, and then there's, the Willows is another neighborhood, um, Bayreach is another neighborhood that is in Long Bay itself as a whole.
So your HOA is allowing seven?
No, her HOA allows thirty days.
Thirty, okay. I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I got a little confused between the.
There's, there's several different HOAs in.
But yours specifically requires thirty.
I was under the assumption that it was seven and not thirty.
Well, the letters state thirty that we've received, and you had someone, uh, from your association state it was thirty.
Okay, Ms. Haven, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll close the public comment at this point, and.
I, I think that the way around this per se is that association allows thirty consecutive days. That's their rules for short-term, so you could approve this exception, and for number five, you put in the special provision that it has to be thirty consecutive days, which is in accordance with.
But isn't there a max of the STL?
So.
Oh, okay.
You, you can't, um, so if you, thirty days would be, they wouldn't need a permit from us. They wouldn't need the special exception.
Oh, that's, 'cause I didn't understand why they were here. She was just advised by.
The STL's fifteen, right?
We can't also legally enforce.
Oh, okay.
That would, that would be illegal for us to.
That provision in.
That provision in there to
Right.
follow, uh, uh, an HOA or a condominium association bylaws. That's, that's not our purview.
Okay.
We're only here to enforce the zoning ordinance.
We're in the rock and the hard place right now.
Well, i- if, if. I don't think so at all.
I don't.
No, not at all. I mean, so the, the, the STL is fifteen days, uh, a max, correct?
Four, uh, I think it was four, uh, at least a minimum of fourteen days or a maximum of.
Maximum fourteen days, so, well, I mean, we can still, we could still approve it, and then, but then she would open herself up to action from the.
Well, that's her problem.
No, no, for sure. Are there other STLs in the communities there?
Uh, I believe there are two others.
Right.
One in the Gulf community and another one that we recently came before the board with a seven-day premise.
Gotcha.
So.
Interesting, interesting. So, this is just, just for us, so this little cul-de-sac is, like, I mean, it's, it's all right here. Have we had any precedent before we've denied an STL because of close proximity like this?
No.
Not that I can, can't recall.
Okay, I was just curious.
I think we should start personally. Um, I think it's detrimental to the character of that neighborhood. I think I think they should be discouraged in residential neighborhoods like that. I think there's places in the city where they're appropriate, and I think there's places where there's not. I think, uh, allowing them, you know, it's detrimental to the neighborhood, but I also think it encourages, it encourages people to buy houses as investments up here instead of people that, that work here being able to buy those houses.
So could we make us, um, could we ask her to maybe take, I think that she's got some work to do on this, this, in my opinion. Could she just withdraw her request for now?
You mean, table it?
Well, not table it. I, you know, I, I, I think that it seems to me that she was surprised that there's a thirty-day minimum. And so if we're going to approve an STL, it, it doesn't fit in the context with, with which she wants to use it. You see what I'm saying? Am I making sense?
Yeah.
Maybe just a minute.
But they, but they're, in order for her to come back, she would, she would have to be providing us some kind of additional information that would.
Yeah, but she doesn't have to come back, because i- if she, i- if the requirement of the community is thirty days, she doesn't need anything from us.
Right. So you're saying you, you think she should withdraw the application?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm suggesting. If she withdraws it now, because, well, uh, yes, that's what I'm suggesting.
Okay.
So can we make that suggestion to her that she does that?
Of course we can.
Because I think that she has more work to do on this, and.
But remember, HOA rules don't regulate us.
Right, right.
Yeah, but I'm gonna agree, I, I just think this little.
I'm in agreement with Eric.
Yeah, and I am, and I am as well. It's, it's, I've driven through there. It's there, tok, 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 right around the corner.
They are.
It's a.
How'd you get through the gate?
Huh?
Yeah.
I can never get in South Town.
It's not South Town.
I got, I got.
It's Long Bay.
Gotta go through South Town to get there.
So, uh, Rob, do you think we should make a motion and deny, or should we should make a recommendation she withdraw?
I think the board should come to a decision on its own.
Okay.
Thank you, Rob.
You're very welcome.
You're great help. What a politician.
You're running for mayor now.
Yeah, I guess so.
It makes sense for her to withdraw.
No, well, no.
It isn't our decision.
Well, however, however, it's a good point. It's, you know, i- i- it's a, it's a sword that cuts both ways. That if there are covenants or, uh, rules relative to a community, neither does the community, excuse me, the community want the city in, you know, stepping on toes, nor does the president, so, i- it does make, uh, we need to come to a decision. And I'm, 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 I'm kind of on the side that Eric brought up. It's a, that's a little tiny little circle, and I just don't think that it fits the spirit of that little little place. Those people bought those places as single-family homes, not as rentals. That's my feeling for this one.
Okay, so we have an application before us, then perhaps we need to make a motion to deny.
To deny, that's what I'm suggesting, yep.
And, 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 I'm.
Okay. I make a motion, we deny the variance, uh, two oh two five.
Special exception.
Special exception.
Thank you, special exception, two oh two five, thank you, dash oh five four. Hang tight. Although the requested use is authorized in the chapter, that the requested use would not increase the demand for municipal services. The requested use does create a, a, um, a congestion hazard for that tiny little community of single-family homes. The applicant has not offered convincing evidence of the knowledge of their HOA's process. And therefore, I think all of the requirements listed under this special exception cannot be met because of that. I'm complete.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the denial? I'll abstain. I'm sorry, Ms. Haven. Moving right along. I have eighty-two Hope Drive, New Hope. Is New Hope Drive here?
Yes.
Come on up, talk with us. Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Your name, please?
Cynthia McRus. I thought you looked familiar. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I thought you looked familiar. Oh, yes.
Tell us how we can help you.
I have a house at eighty-two, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I have a house at, um, eighty-two No, New Hope Drive, and, um, I own the Nazwar Resort, and we're using it for workforce housing. And, um, I am here, I guess, for a variance on the zoning, to change it to a boarding rooming house, so that I, it's not a single family.
How many units is it?
It's just bedrooms. It's not uni- they're not individual units.
So that David all share a kitchen, living room?
Two ki- there's two kitchens, multiple bathrooms.
How many bedroom?
Uh, how many bedrooms? Seven.
Are you renting those spaces to the employees, or?
The employees do pay a very nominal charge. They don't pay market value rent.
How come you need us, is my question.
That would be a question for Rob.
Because they're changing it from a single-family unit to a boarding and rooming house, which is, which is not permitted in that.
I see, okay.
It's three-bedroom, two-bath. You know, we're allowed to do that, change, change, uh, the, the cri-.
With the variance.
Oh, I, I know, but I'm thinking like on the tax map, you know, it's a boarding house, so we can make that change.
We're not chang- we're not changing any zoning ordinance for district. All you're, all you would be doing is granting a variance.
To, to use it as a.
Or a use that's not permitted.
Uh, for a use that's not permitted, okay.
Would this be done year-round or just seasonally?
Seasonal. Yes, the.
So what do you think the number of occupants will be when you use it to house your employees?
They're most, they're mostly all doubles, so two twin beds.
So a total of six people in there or eight people in there?
If there's seven rooms, if there's seven bedrooms and two people.
Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Yeah.
A lot of them are J-ones. They leave at Labor Day. They're only here three months.
Yeah.
So they're not here the full six months that we're open. The others are H-two-B workers.
Yeah.
They might be here five months.
What was the house previously used for?
Uh, the same gentleman was in there for forty years. And then he passed away and his, um, his heirs sold it.
I see.
I, I bought it a year ago.
Very good, for this purpose, I assume.
Yes.
Okay.
They all have vehicles?
No.
How are they getting, it's a pretty good height from.
We transport them.
You do, okay.
Multiple times a day, every shift.
Right. Any other questions for her? Have a seat, Cynthia, and I'll have to open the meeting to the public to see if anybody has.
Thank you.
Comments? Public comment first. Hello.
Hello, my name's James Donato. I'm the owner occupier of one hundred New Hope Drive, and I have no issues with, what Cynthia's doing. Uh, like you said, uh, they come and go, they're very. Uh, like you said, uh, they come and go, they're very quiet, and there's no issues, and they're seasonal, so, um, she, I have no issues at all.
Very good, sir. Thanks for coming in. Is there anybody else? Seeing that, I'll close the public hearing.
I think this is, um, a need for our businesses to survive. They have to get help. Uh, workers from out of the country, and they need housing for those workers. The, uh, Harts Turkey Farm does the same thing. You have.
Margate, Margate does the same thing.
Margate does the same thing. My Nail Salon does the same thing. They have housing. They've got to have housing for their workers.
Very good.
And I don't have, object to this at all.
So, so.
I think it's generous.
So, backing up, so. Are we opening ourselves to a problem by saying yes to this because it will happen again? And here we have a woman that very clearly seems to, will manage this really well. Is there, is there something in zoning that could change to accommodate this a little bit more? You know, we, we live in a resort area, and we will probably be having more of this kind of thing. Is there something that we can do that can kind of make this process a little bit easier?
So, you could amend the table of uses to make boarding and rooming permitted in more zoning districts.
Right.
But you, you could be setting a precedent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
At the same time by approving it.
What's, what's the zone here?
Uh, RR, was it RR one or RR two?
One.
Two.
RR, I have it, it's RR one.
So, it is.
It's RR one, yeah.
It's residential, single-family, or agricultural use there.
Yeah.
Which, and it's, it's more like, it is that zoning district because there is not water and sewer to promote the additional density that, that would be driven by.
Yeah, anyway. I got you, I got you. Yeah, I'm in favor. This is, seems to be a very special, certainly a special exception, and I'm in favor.
Very good.
Yeah, I think in a, in a perfect world, you know, a local business owner doesn't have to go to these lengths to, to house employees, but this is where we're at.
It's crazy.
It is crazy.
Especially temporary employees. It's, you know, it's hard to get a place full-time, let alone a, a three-month place that we don't have to pay five thousand dollars a week.
I hope we see more of it, to be honest, and I mean, maybe it's best we deal with these on a case-by-case basis.
Right, right, right.
But if we do see more of it, then maybe we do have to think about it, yeah.
That's a fair point.
I, I think a new master plan might help point us in that direction.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think it would.
Note number two to the board.
Let's hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance for application ZB two oh two-five dash fifty-five, allowing for, um, a single-family residential home to be considered a boarding house. Criteria number one. That the characteristic of the neighborhood, um, is not changed. It is still a, in a sense, a residential use, just with a few more people. And it is in a remote area, so, and off on a, a side street, so it's not exactly going to affect the safety and, and health of the neighborhood. We have heard from one of the neighborhoods that, or neighbors, that they're not opposed, so they're not concerned about it affecting the character of the neighborhood. So, it doesn't meet, uh, um, or it does meet. It, it will not change the character of the neighborhood. So, therefore, number two, spirit of the ordinance is met. Number three, substantial justice is done because, um, the gain to the applicant is outweighed by any gain to the public. It is very important that we support our local businesses, and, um, and there isn't any threat to the neighborhood, so it is a very important gain for our applicant. The values of the surrounding property isn't any evidence that they would be diminished. And number five, the use for that property as a boarding house is a reasonable use, given the circumstances that are occurring in our city.
Thank you, Marsha. We have a motion.
I would just add one thing. I would like to put seasonal in that. I'm, I'm asking to put, you know, instead of.
Want to amend my motion to add the word seasonal?
Yes, I'm asking.
To what line?
Well, right at the beginning. It just the, a seasonal, a seasonal boarding or rooming. So, if we say that they can do this, do we open it that is open for year-round?
Well, they don't say a seasonal boarding house. They're asking for a boarding house use.
Right.
It doesn't say a seasonal boarding house use.
So, we're giving them permission year-round to use this at?
As a boarding house.
As a boarding house.
Yes.
Right, if that's what we're doing, then I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay. So, I've made a motion. No, I didn't amend it.
No, okay, so I'll second.
I was asking for clarification of the motion.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Very good. Ms. Marcus?
Thank you, guys.
Good luck with your home.
Oh, boy.
Thank you for coming in. Okay. Moving right along. We have two thirty-eight White Oaks Road. It's Mr. Brett Young again.
Darn. Like Eric said, on a case-by-case basis.
Hello. Your name for the record, sir?
Uh, John Cronin, representing the applicant this evening. Nice to see you again. Uh, this matter before you this evening relates to a property at two thirty-eight White Oaks Road. Uh, with me, Nick Loring, who is the project engineer who just put up the board and has some packets to distribute. Peter Granier is also here, and Tony Dyson, the principals of the applicant. Uh, this particular property is a little excess of ten acres. It's close to six hundred feet of frontage on White Oaks Road. Uh, as you know from other trips to this board and planning board and work around the community, both Peter and Tony have been active around the lake probably for the last eight to ten years. They're very proud of the work that they've done and all the communities in which they've worked. They acquired this property, uh, in or near September last year, and have been looking at it to determine what would be the highest and best use for that particular site. Uh, it's in a split zone. It's RR one and RR two. Uh, the division line is approximately through the middle of it. Uh, they came up with a plan, working with their architects and engineers, for a, a village-style concept, kind of something that you might see in a Nantucket or a village type with colonial structures. A lot of peaks and eaves and valleys. Uh, they made a trip conceptual to the planning board just to get from feedback on the style and design and layout. It was pretty well received with the caveat that it would require some variances for it to be approved. Uh, the requests before you this evening are one for use. Uh, these are duplex townhouse-style units. Uh, there's twelve buildings with twenty-four units, uh, and that's also a density piece, uh, that's also included in it, uh, to allow the number of units that are proposed. Uh, we recognize that, uh, this land has had a single-family house on it for a long time, and a lot of excess land. Uh, the house is in a state of disrepair and would be raised as part of this particular project. Uh, we recognize that the area, you know, it's a beautiful area. You've got Prescott Farm up there. Uh, you do have a motorcycle club, some other things, a nice new development, I think. Lady of the Lake, uh, which is cluster that looks like it's progressing pretty well. And Tony and, and Pete have a project that's doing very well, a townhouse project down, uh, close to the junction as you head towards Union Avenue there, right at, uh, the intersection. Uh, when you, uh, look at the layout, I think the packet includes an overall site plan, as well as some elevations of the houses that are proposed. In our application, we've addressed the, the five criteria, and I'll touch on them briefly. Uh, the public interest and spirit intent of the ordinance pieces. I think the law is pretty clear on those, that, uh, when you're seeking a variance, you have to have a use that doesn't in a marked or substantial way alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, we recognize that this is a residential-type neighborhood. Uh, these are residential uses that are proposed. Uh, some of the cases that talk about, uh, a negative impact on the essential character of the neighborhood. For instance, if you put the industrial manufacturing shop on this ten-acre lot, it certainly would impact the neighborhood in a marked degree. Uh, typically, when it's residential versus residential, uh, you have a kit assistant-type use, and the underlying principles of zoning, of course, are to advance health, safety, and welfare. Those two standards are both looked at with the same set of principles under Farrar. The next thing is the impact to value. Will, uh, the variance, as if granted, will they have a negative impact on surrounding property values? Uh, we had asked an appraiser to go take a look at the neighborhood, take a look at the plans, and take a look at the site. In your packet, it's been submitted an appraisal from Mark McKean, uh, who, based on his many years of experience, concluded that if the variances are granted and it's built as per plan, uh, that it would not diminish the value of surrounding, uh, property values. Uh, the balancing test, as far as, uh, the weight, certainly, uh, the harm to the applicant, if this is denied, it puts them, uh, uh, back, trying to come up with another proposed use that works, uh, for this particular site. Uh, as far as impact or harm to the neighbor, certainly, we recognize immediate neighbors might prefer that that, uh, use or that land, that excess land, stay undeveloped. But any type of development on there would be a change. The question would be a substantial change that would be creating a negative impact on them, uh, when value, uh, is considered. Also, you know, the, the standard is not the impact to an individual, but an impact, uh, to the community. Certainly, these, uh, buildings would be a big driver of tax base and additional tax value without much of the way of burden. Target market would be people that have sold homes on the lake, uh, probably don't need the waterfront and the tax bill that goes with it, but would like to stay in the community. Uh, many of them probably seasonal that would, uh, maybe winter in other locations. Uh, looking at the hardship piece to this, as far as the fair and substantial relationship of the ordinance to this particular property. Uh, right now, the density would allow for five lots on this, two-acre minimum. Uh, you're probably aware that there's a bill that was circulating in the legislature. I don't know its final status, that will reduce, uh, lot sizes throughout the state to a half an acre if it's served by public sewer, which is the case here. Uh, and when you look at these particular units, as far as their design and impact, with only one access off of the main road there as opposed to five, certainly, it doesn't create a traffic situation. And the final test of that is whether or not the, uh, use is reasonable. Before I headed out here later this afternoon, as I was walking out my office, I was handed a packet that I believe was from in a butter. And I see Attorney Phil Pot, a friend of mine, is here, and I think he represents those folks, so we're interested to hear, uh, what they have to say. We always consider the neighbors in everything that we do, and, um, and if there's something that they have to say that we think is meaningful, we'd want to address it. So, if you could give me a couple of minutes afterwards to address any comments, uh, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, Butters, would you like to speak?
William Philip Jr. I received a cue from my good friend, John Cronin. I have a letter. An interesting comment was made, and I'll address that comment before I go into the limited crime, uh, criteria. I presented to the board a very limited memorandum of law. The concept now being floated in the legislature is to effectively take away home rule, which has been a precedent in the state. Home rule has been accepted and been a precedent for well over a hundred years, if not more. So, the legislature is publicly stating that, well, we're, maybe we're going to impose under state statute and erode home rule, which has always been accepted. Coupled with that argument that's made is that there's a statewide housing need. Well, it's not Laconia's, um, duty to solve the statewide problem. And, uh, I believe that Laconia stepped up to the plate already and, uh, attempted to solve the housing needs of the entire county. And Laconia's done more than its fair share. Now, with that said, you, uh, you look at my memorandum, the stated purpose of this corridor under thirty-five hyphen fourteen B residential corridor, RR two zone, is the residential rural corridor district is intended to recognize the historic, scenic, and agricultural values of the areas associated with Parade, Meredith Center, and White, White Oaks Road. And the body of law on the subject, and the, the two principal areas that I want to address is the first and second criteria of the, of the statute. In other words, would, would the granting of a variance be, uh, be contrary to the public interest? And two, uh, if the variance were granted, the spirit of ordinance wouldn't, would be observed. These two concepts are often melded together and presented as such, and I'm, I'm going to continue that, uh, that, uh, process. One of the leading cases addressing, uh, the first two criteria is Chester, uh, Chester Rod and Gun Club versus Town of Chester. And I cite it in, in my short memorandum, one fifty-two, New Hampshire, five seventy-seven. The, the basic, uh, uh, obje, uh, premise coming out of that case, the high court, um, states that, uh, to, to grant a variance considering public interest and spirit of the ordinance, the granting of a variance must not violate the ordinance's basic zoning objective. I previously cited two thirty-five hyphen fourteen B, which is the objection, objective, to, uh, to recognize the historic, scenic, and agricultural values of White Oaks Road. So, you're being called on tonight in considering whether a variance should be granted, to determine whether that objective just stated, basic, the basic zoning objectives will be, uh, will be, uh, adhered to. And I submit to you, if you grant the variance, it cannot. It'll, it'll eliminate that objective, which has been longstanding. You have Prescott Farm up there. You have at least two other farms. I gave you a handout. The lot, there's large tracts of land, and there's large, there's larger-than-usual residential, um, lots. This is a ten-acre lot, six hundred feet. It, it's, the allowable use is five acres, which, uh, would involve two-acre density, which would, that permitted use adheres to the basic zoning objective, which I have stated. Now, in determining the basic zoning objective, you, uh, you, uh, must determine, under the case law, whether the variance would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, okay? And additionally, whether granting the variance would threaten public health, safety, or welfare. For, I'll deal with the first, uh, criteria for the measure of the, the overall objective, basic, basic zoning objectives. The, the essential character of the neighborhood is a rural atmosphere. It's been longstanding. White Oaks is a corridor. White Oaks is, is a route you take, I often take, going to the Weers because it's open, it's not congested, and it's a nice look. There are farms, there are residences on large acres. The applicant is proposing to increase that density almost five-fold with his proposal. Five units to twenty-four units, just shy of, of, of five. And you're being called on to accept that and to, and to, I submit, go contrary to the stated purpose for that zone, which has been longstanding. purpose for that zone, which has been longstanding. Laconia has certainly changed in the fifty years I've been here, and open space now becomes more critical than it was back fifty years ago with development in certain zones. Certain zones allow a high density of development. This zone does not, and the zone has adhered to the stated principle, and you should adhere to that principle. The public health and safety issue, there is no public water supply to this site. It's only municipal sewer. And the applicant proposes to bootstrap with the public sewer aspects to allow for density, but is not discussing the matters like fire suppression. I believe the nearest hydrant to the site is fifteen hundred feet away. So if you have an issue where you have to address a building burning up there, you're going to have to have the fire department pull a lot of hose in order to suppress that fire. Whereas now, with the open space and country atmosphere, it's not as critical. But we're putting this property to a townhouse use, which makes more demand on that sort of service, I suggest. Now, in the other area I'd like to address is substantial justice, what I call is a substantial justice consideration. Unfortunately, it was spelled incorrectly by my office, and please excuse me. And the lead case in that is McAlachi Glen Associates versus Town of Chester. Again, Town of Chester seems to be a host for litigation. That's at one fifty-five, New Hampshire, one oh two. In order to grant a variance, the proposed development is consistent with the present use. Now, I submit to you, it's hard for the applicant to suggest that the density proposed in a townhouse operation, given the present environment and longstanding environment up there, that White Oaks Road, I want to tell you, hasn't changed in the fifty years I've been here. And I'll stand by that general statement. Now, you're being asked to allow that to be eroded and eventually to change the stated objective of zoning that goes back any number of years. I don't want to say from inception, but my recollection is that it's very close to inception, that this would be an open corridor. I made the analogy, perhaps sounds overstated, I made the analogy that White Oaks Road is the Central Park of Laconia. Everyone knows Central Park, what it was set out for, and thank God it was set out, because where would New York be today if there wasn't a Central Park? And that was a result of planning objection that probably went back to the inception of skyscrapers and high density in New York, and it's been a saving grace for New York City. And I not suggest that Laconia is going to become a New York City, but eventually, with the demands for the Lakes Region, it's going to see more and more density and calls for it. Now, if you don't have a set off to preserve open space, which the neighbors, I hope some of the neighbors come up and address their concerns, their personal concerns, then you violate basic principles of zoning, particularly when the zoning ordinance has taken the time to painstakingly address those objections in clear, concise language, which everyone can understand. The hardship, unnecessary hardship, it goes to say that there's no special conditions of the property that would warrant the density requested. They're purely economic, and to suggest that it meets a reasonableness standard is an over, it's just not the case. This is an unreasonable, unwarranted attempt at eventually changing this corridor, which, again, your zoning ordinance, when it, as part of its creation, made the point of stating in two thirty-five fourteen B, what the intent of that RR two zone would be, Parade Road, Meredith Center, and White Oaks Road. So if you allow this density to go on, then you're eroding at the precedent set by, in the mandate of your own zoning ordinance. Your duty bound to apply to zoning ordinance within a reasonable area, I'll call it, of interpretation. I submit to you, if you grant this variance, you're violating that purpose and principle, which you as board members more or less bought into. You tell me. Again, the handout, which I provided you, TaxMap verifies what I'm saying about the low density up there, large lots. The applicant certainly bought into this, knowing full well what it was, and we're not opposed to the applicant developing the parcel under the current zone, five acres, five lots, but apparently the applicant does not deem that to be financially rewarding. And that's not, that's not the purpose or the objective of zoning ordinance. And with that, I'll sit down.
Thank you, Attorney Phil Pot.
And John Cronin is a good friend of mine. So you're seeing lawyers treating each other civil.
Friend of mine.
Is there any other public comment about White Oaks? Please come up and address.
I got Mr. Phil Pot beat. I've been on White Oaks Road for over fifty years.
Can we just get your name and record?
My name is Glenn Joyce. I'm a director butter to the north side of the property.
No, sir, I've traveled it for fifty years. I'm a farmer from Gilman.
I guess one of my biggest disappointments is that this letter notifying of Butters showed up in my mailbox today. I believe I'm supposed to have a five-day advance notice at least.
Would you like to see when it was mailed out?
Oh, it's postmarked on the twelfth.
Well, when I mail them at the post office, I lose control after that, so.
We do have the stamp receipts here showing that it was mailed out in time.
It was postmarked on the twelfth. Is that the intent of the? All right. Anyway, I do agree with Mr. Phil Pot that RR one and RR two, the original purpose was to maintain the rural character of White Oaks Road, Parade Road, and Meredith Center Road, and it's been that way. I built my house in nineteen ninety. It was rural, RR one and RR two at that time. It's basically, I just want you guys to remember that for a special exception or any kind of variance, you buy the property, that's what you get. I think you need to think about the additional traffic you're going to have on White Oaks Road if you approve twenty-four units. That's possibly forty-eight potential more vehicles coming down the bottom of White Oaks Hill. That blinking light's been there since the sixties. Maybe it's time to think about a new light if we're going to start changing the zoning. I don't know if the city water line's going to be extended. I don't know what kind of well you got in mind. I haven't heard anything of that. You need to think about pedestrian safety. There's quite a few people walk up and down the road. Obviously Cynthia was in here, and there's going to be more people coming up and down New Hope onto White Oaks Road. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Very good, Mr. Joyce. Thanks for coming in.
Just need to stick to what we got.
Hello, my name is Dean Ingram. I'm here with my wife Suzanne.
I missed your name, sir.
Dean Ingram.
Ingram.
I'm here with my wife Suzanne. Attorney Phil Pot spoke on our behalf. My wife Suzanne and I have lived on White Oaks Road next to this subject property for twenty years, where Mr. Grinier plans to add twenty-four dwellings. Obviously, we oppose this project. Laconia, like most cities in the U.S., has zoning regulations in effect. By definition, zoning regulations exist to guide and control the development of land to ensure a balanced and sustainable community. Zoning regulations protect the public health and safety, minimize environmental impact, and maintain property values. By regulating land use, zoning helps to prevent incompatibility, land uses from having to coexist. We submit that any kind of dense housing development at two thirty-eight White Oaks Road will be incompatible with our rural neighborhood of single-family homes. Mr. Grinier purchased two thirty-eight White Oaks Road, and when he did so, he did it subject to Laconia's existing zoning regulations. He didn't purchase the property, and then the city suddenly changed the rules, nor did the city add any new restrictions on him. Mr. Grinier is not a victim of a zoning switcheroo. He is a professional developer, and he knew what Laconia's zoning regulations were before spending a dime. And his full and complete understanding of Laconia's zoning regulations should be apparent, because this is not his first time up to bat. And now he's back, expecting a variance. Mr. Grinier's business plan is very simple and calculated. Just drive up to Laconia, where you can purchase not enough land, on which he can erect way too many small dwellings to generate a tidy profit. In conclusion, we only ask this: just uphold the existing zoning regulations. You are our last line of defense, so please don't waver, don't cower down. It's your duty to protect those of us who call Laconia our hometown. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Ingram. Anybody else? Hello.
Hello, I'm Julie Worth. I live on one ninety-one White Oaks Road. I live there for the last ten years. I have a couple of kids that are teenagers, young adults, and I have a rental that I have over the garage. And when I bought the property, that was a big deal, that I, the owner, had to live in the home in order for a renter to be there, that I couldn't rent out both the house and the apartment over the garage. That was part of the expectation, and I've been grateful to live in that area. The traffic has increased. There was a motorcycle accident within the last couple of weeks. They're putting development down the street, and that's, and it is becoming a hazard where it is for the, down the street, trying to get out on Weers Boulevard and moving on. So the density of adding twenty-four properties on that property is definitely going to be a hazard to all of us that are living there. I do walk my dog on White Oaks Road and see other people, and it is a concern. We are grateful to be able to live in a safe neighborhood that's quiet with the traffic as low as it can possibly be, but we understand there has to be development, but it needs to be done in a smart way. And I appreciate that you do this job so that we can continue to be happy living in Laconia. I'm an all-year resident. Most of the people are all-year residents there. We don't need any more seasonal. We need people that want to be here and make the city better. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Ms. Worth.
This is my son, Derek.
Derek, how do you do?
Doing good. So my name is Derek Worth. I am Julie's son. I live in, I live with my mom, and we've been there for ten years. I would definitely agree that we do not need any more expansion. There's expansion down the hill, and there's a bunch more going on, and we want it to be as rural and quiet as long as possible. That's why we live there, and that's what we appreciate about it. So we do not need any more expansion, please. And I do want to add, sadly, not this past winter, but the winter before, I was shoveling the snow, and there was a plow truck that came and hit one of our tenants' dogs, and it was a hit-and-run. So we do not want any more traffic there due to that sad situation already, so we would prefer if it was just more quiet. So, thank you.
Very good, Ms. Worth. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Alicia Emery, and I'm at one eighty-one White Oaks Road. And my mom is at two thirty-five, although she can't be here tonight, she's a director butter across the street. And I built my house twenty-five years ago and had to apply, come up with the two acres and follow all of the requirements in order to build in that neighborhood. And if you change that now, and that's all allowed for everybody going forward, where does it end? And it doesn't matter. A lot of the people on the road that are getting older are probably going to sell at some point. Does that mean that every two acre, five acre lot now can have X number of houses? If we're going to start with this, you're setting the precedent for where it goes from here on out. I just hope that there's some consideration given to just where everything is now and preserving some sort of rural area in the city, which is becoming very, very rare. And I agree with the traffic has gotten increasingly worse with all of the other developments, and this is just going to make one more big development on top of the fact that there just isn't, it's just too much for that space. We understand that it's going to get developed at some point, it's not going to necessarily stay an open spot, but they should have to stick to the same rules that we all did in keeping the road as it is. That's it.
Very good, Ms. Emery. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this development? Hello, sir.
Hi. I'm Mike Mills. I live at one fifty-four White Oaks Road. I'm actually a second generation in my family to live in White Oaks Road, and I agree with everyone else that has to live on that road. I'm opposed to adding twenty-four units, traffic. We don't need any more. You know, I walk the road, I walk past that property, run past that property most days in the summer, and we just don't need any more of this.
Very good, Mr. Mills. Thank you for coming in. Hello, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Francine Ray. I've been at two oh nine White Oaks Road for forty-six years. I look... I look directly across from my house at this field, proposed development. I have a couple questions. One is, I'm concerned about my well water if 24 units go in across the street from me. And I'm also, the point was made that Laconia needs housing, but I'm questioning, does Laconia need McMansions, or do we need affordable housing?
Thanks for coming in, Ms. Ray.
I'm Lynn Lindsay, I actually don't live on White Oak, I live on 257 Weir's Boulevard. I bought this property on the backside on Weir's Boulevard. And I have to say, I'm up here probably, it's my secondary home, but I'm here probably 10 months out of the 12. And in the summertime, it is so busy that I actually go White Oaks just to keep the calm. I just did it the other day, 'cause I know, I'm like, oh my god, here we go, Memorial Day's coming. That is such a beautiful property. I love traveling that street. And if you look everywhere else, Weir's Boulevard is so clustered with homes, right? There's barely like this much room. You go on the other side, and then you have actually Weir's Beach, which is shoulder to shoulder with people. You have at the end of White Oaks, all those park homes, that are like this. In that area, it is just so nice the way it's all distant out. And I agree with everybody else, we seem to be taking the nice areas and just overcrowding a small area. Now, 10 acres is not a small area, but what you're gonna do with it is gonna look like a cheese set for everybody. It's gonna cause noise, traffic, and I think that whole area is already noisy. So, on behalf of my friends who do live on White Oak, I agree with them, and I'm happy to speak on their behalf.
Thank you for coming by.
Mr. Cronin wants to come back and do a rebuttal.
I think we have a couple more members from the public that would like to speak, anybody? Yes, sir, state your name, please.
My name is Colby Bautler, I live at 181 White Oaks Road. Same thing as everyone else. I'd just like to add, if you do approve this, you're prioritizing the desires of outside professionals who are doing it strictly for profit over the citizens who have been living on White Oaks Road, who travel White Oaks Road, who enjoy the ruralness of White Oaks Road, and their desire to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thanks for coming in this evening. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Attorney Cronin, do you wanna give a little rebuttal?
Sure. Briefly, in terms of that area, there's no dispute that it's a beautiful area. I believe some of the farmland up there is preserved, and I don't think anytime soon we'll see active farms coming to those properties. And if you did have an active farm, I'm sure it would have a much more significant impact on property values than what's being proposed here. With respect to the comments about, you know, there's a zoning ordinance and you need to follow it, if that were the case, there'd, in every case, there'd be no need for this board, and every ordinance is required to have a variance provision. It's constitutionally required, because the starting point in every land use case is that people have a right to do what they want with their property, subject to a narrowly tailored zoning ordinance. And the speakers are correct, that's designed for health, safety, and welfare purposes. I heard some comments about water. Water for fire is important, it's generally a planning board issue. You have to get the fire chief to sign off for any project to make sure that's gonna work, whether that's a fire well, or a cistern, or whatever, there's a lot of options to do that. With respect to well water, everyone has an equal right to, to use the groundwater, that's a DES-regulated concept. To get any well approved, you have to go to the DES, make application, do test studies. So, as far as that being a health, safety, and welfare concern, there's protections in place so that it wouldn't be. The two cases that were discussed, the Chester Gun and Rod Club, they were proposing there to put 160-foot communications tower in there, something very different in a residential neighborhood. Malickley Glen, the court reversed, the trial court, the Supreme Court did, saying variance was appropriate in that case. That was an issue with respect to a wetland setback for a particular development. The point I'm trying to make here is that seeking a variance is not criminal. Pete and Tony stand by their work. I think the folks here and staff could tell you what they do is done right, it's done professionally, and it's very well done. With respect to the comments tonight, like I said, the first I heard of it was 3 o'clock this afternoon when I was going out. We value the opinions of what the abutters say. There's some concepts that we could do, one certainly ask for a condition that we satisfy any firefighting or water safety issues for fire control. We could say to, the density would not exceed what was proposed, and let the planning board determine what was correct based on traffic studies. We've heard a dog getting hit, that's unfortunate, could happen in any neighborhood. When we go to the planning board, if we get there, we'll have to do a comprehensive traffic study, and if there are problems with it, they can reduce the density, they can ask for off-site improvements, and do a whole host of other things. So, let the planning board determine that. But I think my preference would be to digest some of these concerns, and maybe have an opportunity to sit down with my friend as well, Attorney Phil Pot, and see if there's a way to try and get something that's more palatable to them, and understand what it is that they wanna see there in terms of development. Is it smaller homes? Is it an alternative use? Is there things that we can do with a buffer that will address their concerns? In terms of traffic, this is laid out with one curb cut as opposed to apps per three or four, which is a much safer traffic safety design. We're willing to revisit that and maybe make some modifications. And finally, if the legislature acts, which I think June 15th is probably the drop-dead date, I know sometimes they go over that, but if legislation is gonna pass and come out of committee, it will have to, it'll have to come out soon. So, if that is passed, and it's half-acre minimum, maybe the density issue is not a concern. We could revise it to 20 units, and we wouldn't need that variance. So, what I'd like to ask the board, if you do see fit to continue this for a month, give us an opportunity to try and talk to the abutters, see if we can address some of their concerns, and see what happens with that legislation.
Sounds reasonable. I'm not aware of the legislation that's pending.
There's about probably 10 or 12 House bills that started, I don't know, in the House or the Senate. Some of them have been ITL'd, inexpedient to legislate, others are still sitting in committee. One of those was to have a state regulation that would supersede zoning for residential, and it related to the high cost of housing and the need for housing. And certainly, you know, Laconia is a dense, it's an urban area, there's no dispute, Attorney Phil Pot said that it's a lot of new construction, and Laconia is a great community to work in. But it would say that the density, if you have sewer, would be a half-acre per lot. So, that would override the ordinance now. And if that happens, that would satisfy density. It wouldn't give us exactly what we would need, but although it's not my property, and not mine to say, I would recommend to our clients that they trim back the density that they're seeking, maybe adjust some of the homes for the most nearest abutter, and make sure that he has protection and buffers that might be attractive. Just one final note, I think the woman that spoke last, who uses White Oaks Road, I think, and I didn't mention it, and the only reason I'm mentioning it, the other side, the lake side of this property, is a densely developed condominium community. I'm not so sure where she lives, but that's certainly higher than the ratio that's what's being sought here, as it should be, because it's, you know, high-density condo. And there's a number of high-density condos all along Weir's Boulevard. But I think if getting this information late, if we had an opportunity to digest it, try and work with the folks, we might be able to come back and make some further concessions.
Very good. I'm willing to table it for a month.
You just have to make a motion to do that.
Right.
I make a motion to table this application without prejudice for one month.
I will second.
Thank you, any discussion? All in favor? We'll table it for you. Very good, sir.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Good luck with your negotiations. Of course, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break, folks. Anybody need to use the bathroom, it's downstairs.
I'm just gonna go on. I'm gonna send an email to my five representatives about Laconia. They are creating a lot of problems for us.
Richard, where do you live?
Bogart, should know better.
This end of it?
Yep.
Are you on the map here?
No. Scott, did you mute it by any chance? Just gonna mute it just while our equipment says.
We have a couple more items on the agenda. We would love to finish up tonight. Up next is fifteen Morris Avenue. They're asking for a variance and another variance. Hello, sir.
Hi. My name's Randy Walker. I work for the law firm of Walker and Varney in Wolfboro. I'm here tonight filling in for my partner, Jim Coles, who submitted this application that couldn't be here this evening. I represent Community Rentals LLC, which owns property at fifteen Morris Avenue. Also tax map eighty-two, and their sister company, The Weir's Beach Properties LLC, owns property to the side, which is a vacant lot and the building behind it. And you might remember this application. They were here in March trying to obtain a duplex. And I think they submitted six variances. And after getting input from the board and a butters, they're now back tonight with a much more modest proposal. There's an existing single-family house on the property. Their proposal is to have an existing single-family house on the property, replace it with a newer structure. The existing building's quite dilapidated. And instead of asking for six variances, they're only asking for two. One for a driveway, because they proposed to have cars inside a garage. And secondly, setbacks. And I could do either variance application that you prefer. I'll do the driveway one first or setbacks. Do you have a preference either way?
You can mix them together, Mr. Walker.
Okay, then I'll continue to mix. So, the end of the day, from a parking perspective, two parking spaces are required. They will have two parking spaces. They'll be in a garage, under the building, inside the existing footprint. So they're fully compliant. They just don't have a driveway. And then as far as the setbacks, the building right now violates all four setbacks. The building actually hangs over into Morris Avenue. It's not even, you know, inside the lot line. It actually hangs over it. The new proposal, all four sides will become more conforming and two will be fully conforming. And one of the ways that we accomplish that, and as a condition of approval, we invite the board to join the twelve-hundred-square-foot vacant lot beside this, into this lot. So we're making this lot bigger so it'll have more space. And we're happy to do that as a condition of approval. So let me get to the criteria, and I'll just start with the driveway variance. So basically, the town requires two parking spaces, or the city, I should say, requires two parking spaces. And most people, if you have a twenty-five-foot driveway, you can park two cars in that driveway. If you have a garage at the end of the driveway, the driveway only needs to be nineteen feet. Presumably, a car would be inside that nineteen feet. What the applicant is proposing is to build a garage underneath the building to drive right into it from street level. A two-car garage so that there would not be any cars outside. But they would meet the requirement by having two cars inside. The building is roughly thirty feet by forty feet. And you could actually perhaps put four cars inside there, depending on the size of this smaller. You could put four. But if they're mid-size or larger, Kai, you could only put two. But in either case, they would be fully compliant with the underlying rules of the ordinance. So for the variance not to be contrary, variance is not contrary to the public interest because we are fully compliant, again, with the two parking space requirement. The residential neighborhood that we're in will not change in any way because it's residential now. And a single-family home will be built on this property. It'll just be newer, code-compliant, modern materials, et cetera. There won't be any off-street parking at all, again, because the parking will be fully onsite. And you have a plan with both existing conditions and a proposed conditions, exhibit one and two, which would show where those footprints are. And the footprint of the building is roughly thirteen-hundred-and-twenty-nine square feet. The proposed building would be thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-six, so it's virtually identical square footage of the footprint of the building. Their goal is to go up. And this would not in any way threaten the public health, safety, or welfare by having parking inside rather than outside. Again, it's fully compliant with the ordinance. There was an application by a neighbor's named Cot back in 2018 where they actually came in and asked to make their building more non-conforming. In this case, this building will be more conforming. But the board in that case said that the variance is not contrary to the public interest because it doesn't impact the public one way or another. And having the parking in a garage versus in a driveway does not impact the public one way or another. And much like the case here, the board noted that it's an old cottage being improved in a neighborhood where other old cottages are being improved. And that's just what's happening with this application. They're taking down an old dilapidated structure and improving it. Two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed because, again, this factor is related to the first one, that it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which is residential now. We're residential afterwards, so it doesn't affect that at all. Substantial justice is going to be done. This requires a balancing test. And the benefit to the applicant is clear that they'll be able to have cars, you know, inside and, again, be fully compliant. And there's no downside at all to the general public. There'll be no, you know, parking on the street. The cars, instead of being in a driveway, will not even be visible. They'll be inside a garage. And also, there'll be less asphalt, which is generally a plus, particularly as you get closer to the lake. Number four, the value of surrounding properties will not be diminished in any way. This property is, again, rundown and dilapidated, putting a new building there. It'll be modern, more attractive, code-compliant. It's always a plus and invariably improves property values. And when you improve the property value of this property, it's much like tides in the ocean. When one property goes up in value, usually the others in the area go up as well. And number five, on the driveway end, literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship because there is no fair and substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance, which is to provide two parking spaces, which we're doing. We're just not doing it with a driveway or a garage in a driveway, but just having the vehicles in the garage. You'll drive right from Morris Street right into a garage at that level. And because we're increasing the size of the lot by twelve-hundred square feet, about a fifty percent increase in lot size, it makes it much more palatable. And then just to go to the setback issue, as I noted, all four sides of the existing building are violating all of the setbacks. The front setback is actually not just within the setback. It's over the property line. The two side setbacks, both are in violation. And the rear setback is also in violation. The proposed footprint, you can see from the, I think it's exhibit two, the proposed conditions plan. The side setbacks will be fully compliant, so that's a benefit. And the front and back setbacks will be more compliant as opposed to less. So this is better than what we have. And I noticed that your ordinance has a provision that says "non-conforming structures may be replaced with a new structure which reduces the non-conformity of any dimensional requirements." And that's exactly what they're doing. They're making this project more compliant as opposed to less compliant. So for all of those reasons, we would respectfully request that you approve both variances. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
How tall is the building proposed?
I don't know. They haven't fully designed it yet. However, it will be in compliance with the height. Last time they were here, they were trying to go over the height. This building, we're not asking for a height variance because they will be in compliance.
Very good.
Because I was curious about what was different this time than last time. So one, you're going through single family. But the design of the property, the design of the building that you want to do, is it different than what you proposed last time? Because the diagrams look very, very similar to what we saw last time.
Yeah, so the footprint is, you can see the footprint. And again, that's the only one that's becoming more compliant. They spent some money, obviously, on the design last time. And rather than spend more money on a new design, if we can get this footprint and be fully compliant again, then they'll spend the money. But they didn't have a plan coming in today.
Okay, because it looked familiar.
Question relative to the property. You said you're combining?
Yeah, so we invite the board to join the property that's a tax map eighty-three. That's, I think, a...
I know. I've got it right here. That's what I'm asking for.
To join it. And the reason for that is twofold. It makes this lot bigger, which is a plus. And it helps with the setbacks. That's why we are now fully compliant with the side setbacks because they've just added a twelve-hundred-square-foot property into this.
So for clarity, no, I get what you're saying. So for clarity, what do you mean by joining?
Merging. They'll be merged together.
How are you going to do that?
Well, you own both properties, right?
Yeah, so that property is owned, the budding property is owned by Weir's Beach Properties LLC, which is the sister owner to the applicant. And as a condition of approval, we're happy to do a deed to make it the same owner and merge it.
So Weir's Beach Properties also owns eighteen Allen Ave. Is there something going on with that? Are you taking that, so are you taking that entire lot eighty-three? And so you're proposing to purchase that entire lot from Allen to Morris?
So...
Okay, yeah. We're getting to the heart of it now.
No, no, no. The fifteen Morris Street, you know, has its own property. There's a twelve-hundred-square-foot lot next door vacant. That would be merged into eighty, so eighty-three and eighty-two would become one lot.
Okay.
Yep.
But Weir's Beach Property also owns eighteen Allen.
Right, there's...
It's insignificant. Okay, fair, fair.
Nothing to do with this application at all.
So your proposal...
Other than it's in favor of it.
I'm complete with you. Thank you.
Do we have to have the fact that they have joined those two properties in order to get that extra footage so they can be in compliance?
You could make that a condition.
A condition?
Yeah.
And we're inviting that condition. Happy to do that.
Okay. And that's, that condition would be asking for a deed showing that properties of fifteen Morris and what's the other property?
I think you'd be asking for them to be, for the two lots to be merged.
Two lots to be merged.
Yeah, eighty-two and eighty-three.
I'm sorry?
Lots eighty-two and eighty-three to be merged.
Eighty-two and eighty-three.
Yes, ma'am.
Eighty-two and eighty-three need to be merged as part of the condition of approval.
You could certainly make that a condition of approval.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Would the garage access be off Morris Avenue?
Yes, absolutely.
So with the building being three foot four from Morris Avenue, do you think you can turn a car into a garage from that street?
Well, it's sixteen feet wide, so yes. Just like turning into a driveway. Any other questions?
No, I'm done with that. Mr. Walker, you could have a seat for a moment.
Thank you.
We'll see if there's any public input on this project. Yes, sir.
Sean Dooley, twenty-two Morris Ave. Much like someone who spoke earlier, one of my concerns is that, I got this letter on Saturday. It was postmarked the fourteenth. I don't know the laws. I'm just a homeowner. But I do know that the majority of the people in neighborhood are seasonal cottages. And, you know, back in March, when the variance for the hardship was denied, a lot of those people were here. And they didn't have time to respond and come from out of state to get here to voice their opinion. These people have been there thirty, forty, fifty years. I think that's pretty significant. You know, for that reason, I would ask that this be postponed to the next meeting until those people can be here to voice their opinions.
Mr. Chair, the state requirement is five days. We gave them seven days.
The fourteenth. The letter was postmarked.
I brought it to the post office at the thirteenth. Five days in between. We don't count the day mailing. We don't count the meeting day.
Do you count the day it's postmarked?
Mine says thirteen.
I have the envelope that shows the fourteenth.
When it leaves my hand at the post office, I lose control. It's on them.
We sent out them certified mail.
Okay.
When the post office stamps our receipt is when the date starts.
Well, the primary reason I ask this is, you know, the current footprint of the house is about five-hundred-and-eighty square feet. It's going to twelve-hundred square feet on the footprint. The current living space is ten-seventy-five, and it's going to thirty-six-hundred with a garage under. You know, twenty-three percent of all homes purchased last year, single-family, were by LLCs.
Mr. Dooley, I'm not seeing your figures here, thirty-six-hundred square feet.
As I said, I did not have time to get any of the paperwork. I'm working off this design here.
Because...
It's thirty by forty, right? That's twelve-hundred.
Right.
And we have three stories. Plus the garage.
Is that building three stories?
I can show you what I have here.
Yeah.
I don't know if you're looking at something different.
Mr. Walker said he didn't have the final plan yet. This is not what they're gonna build.
That's the old one.
Okay, dude.
That's what they proposed last month.
We haven't had time to get any of this stuff. So does anyone have a picture of the new one?
The, no, Mr. Walker said they didn't have a final plan yet, but it can't be this high. There's no way.
Well, they can take this off.
Correct.
Which is a debt and comply, and this would still make it thirty-six-hundred square feet. So basically, if an LLC is allowed to do this, there's nothing to stop other LLCs to come in to non-conforming lots and continue to do this. I mean, we'd drastically change the whole makeup of the Weir's. I mean, it's been there for over a hundred years. It's a quaint little area. And, you know, something else I want to point out is neither Community Rentals who sent the letter or Weir's Beach LLC is in good standing with the state. So I don't even know if they have the right to be operating. You know, that's right off the state webpage. So I don't know. Maybe you could speak to that.
That's not in our purview to control that. We're here just for the zoning variances.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying that should be a factor. I mean, it's, you know, they're not in good standing, which means they haven't filed something or there's a reason behind it.
Mr. Dooley, the last time they were here, they were denied because they weren't single-family.
Yeah.
Too tall. So now they're gonna be single-family.
Yes.
We talked about parking last time, and now they're trying to address the parking by saying the cars are gonna go in the garage.
Yeah.
We talked about last time the setback, and now they're gonna try to join two lots so that they can be compliant with setbacks.
Well, the other lot's point oh four acres. It's even smaller, so I'm not how that, know how that would conform once they move the land. The other thing is the road's only fourteen feet wide.
Yes.
And the turnaround time to get into that garage and not be on someone else's property would be hard. You know, and it's a monstrosity. It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood.
Okay, so that's another objection you bring is because it's gonna be three stories and the character of the neighborhood is two stories.
Yes, for the most part.
For the most part. I don't know of any three stories when I was in there looking.
No, and none of them are, none of them are taking up this much of the lot and being, it's just gonna be enormous. It's gonna be over everyone else's house and...
Would you agree, though, that that property that exists there now needs to be torn down?
Well, it does because since they bought it, they've done nothing to but tear the windows out. And, you know, it wasn't in great shape to start, but it's completely worse now.
Did it have a fire?
No.
Or it didn't? It's just dilapidated?
It's dilapidated, yeah. But I think the old owners sold it about two and a half, three years ago. And I don't think anything's been done since. But I know there's a lot of other people that want to speak, so I don't want to take up any more time. But I would like you to take into consideration that they are not in good standing with the state, that this would be a monstrosity. And once you allow this, what's to stop the next LLC from buying a property? This is point oh five acres. I mean, there are other houses with point oh seven, point oh eight. We're just gonna turn it into, you know.
That was another point last time that got denied, that there was no, nothing substantially different in terms of character of the lot, the property. There wasn't any hardship.
Yeah, that's why the hardship wasn't overturned. It was the same as everyone else. So, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Dooley, good information.
Yes, ma'am. Hello.
Melanie Flanagan, twenty-four Allen Ave. I was gonna preface my comments with the same comment about not receiving the notice. I didn't get mine till Friday. Weir's Beach Post Office, Postmaster is there from nine to twelve. I showed up and got my mail at ten, and it wasn't in my mailbox. And so we were, we were delayed in getting, in getting notice. And there are three out-of-state abutters who had wanted to be in attendance. I think you received letters of opposition from them. If you don't have it in your packets, they have given us permission to read their letters in their absence. And we'd be happy to do that. Secondly, I have to say I was disappointed that the applicant did not, we are a very close neighborhood, and did not even make the attempt to meet or discuss any of his plans with the abutters, especially after our last March seventeenth meeting where we came out and voiced our concerns. Okay, so now I'm gonna continue with my concerns for the proposed construction. I do feel it's an oversized structure on this very small lot. It's a three-story, is what I understand, structure that does not fit into the character of the neighborhood. And although this size was addressed at the last board meeting, the applicant has still submitted a proposal for a thirty-by-forty, three-story structure with an additional, there's a four-by-thirty deck on that, so that's not even included, and a three-by-twelve entry. So the total footprint, I think, is thirteen-fifty-six, as was mentioned. And if you do, as Jay said, that's thirty-six-hundred square foot of living space. This time, they changed the wording a little bit. Instead of referring it to, they're now referring it to a single-family townhouse. My understanding, a definition of a townhouse is shared walls. They did not call this a single-family home. They called it a single-family townhouse. And a townhouse with shared walls means more than one family will be living in that space, which makes sense that they want to propose a three-story, thirty-by-forty-plus, I think it's like thirty-by-forty-seven, structure. So this proposal significantly exceeds the scale appropriate for that lot size. It exceeds the scale for that lot size, which will lead to issues with site compatibility, neighborhood character, and overall community impact. As Jay mentioned, what are we gonna start allowing, the vertical structures going on everywhere? Because they're all non-conforming lots. We can't just all of a sudden allow big vertical buildings going in in this very special and unique neighborhood. A structure of this magnitude on a constrained parcel, I think, risks overburdening the land, potentially affecting drainage, safety, privacy, and the overall aesthetic harmony of the area. And it also may set, as I just alluded to, a challenging precedent for future development, potentially compromising the unique character that makes our little community so special and desirable. We bought a property in a very tight community, knowing what we had to work with. We did do renovations on our house. It was eighteen hundreds. We got the appropriate variances. But we built it. It fit in. It doesn't, it's not a modern structure. It's a structure that looks like the other houses in the area. And I think what they're doing here is something very, very different. The applicant is proposing that their design would reduce the non-conforming nature of fifteen Morris. But in doing so, they are indirectly increasing the non-conforming nature of eighteen Allen. I'm in a butter to eighteen Allen. If they're taking all of, we're calling it Wesley Ave, and I think we did last go around, that parcel, that to build, to have the enough space to build this property on fifteen Morris, then they're eliminating the parking at eighteen Allen. And eighteen Allen, right now, the residents have two pickup trucks and a regular-sized vehicle. So it's, practically speaking, it's, they're using Wesley Ave as a sole, what was I gonna say here? They're increasing the non-conforming nature of the total area with both of their houses now. They're not decreasing it. They're not decreasing it. Now, with two homes, they're increasing the non-conformity. So they really are making things worse. As a year-round resident, we live there full-time. We're not seasonal, and there are others just like us that are full-time residents. We're not just seasonal. And I'm concerned that now that they're conveying all of Wesley Ave to their Morris Ave project and leaving Eighteen Allen Ave with no parking, um, this will impact Allen Ave. So we're not only just talking about Morris now, we're talking about Allen Ave, and it's ludicrous. And I think the applicant personally is being disingenuous, because as I'm sure you've realized, the only reason they're conveying all of Wesley, or that parcel of land now they're calling it, from Eighteen Allen to Fifteen Morris is to get approval for the building of Fifteen Morris. I mean, there's no other reason why they would be doing this. And the bottom line is that they should be proposing a normal-size, single-family home, not townhouse, not three stories, not thirty-six hundred square foot, and not be playing funny games with the numbers and using Wesley Ave to accomplish this oversized structure. We believe that there's no hardship here, and that they should only be allowed to build a structure that's appropriate for the space and the character of the neighborhood. We were, we also, as a side note, wondered why in this latest proposal, there was no mention of height, like the previous one. There was no proposed building photo. So I, I don't know why those weren't included. We want the board to realize that the neighbors do not oppose the building of a single-family home that fits into the character of the neighborhood, just like there was previously at this location. The abutters welcome this, especially because the applicants, um, when they purchased this property, they started, um, demolishing the existing structure before getting the necessary permits and making the building now look dilapidated and like a dump. There were windows in that building. Now they're not. There were doors. Now we've got boarded up things. They removed the shed. They removed the garage, again, without demolishing, demo, demolishing permits. Didn't say that right. I would, I would urge you to refer to the picture in the Laconia Tax Record website, and you can see what the house looked like when they purchased it. Yes, it was old, but it had windows. It had doors. It had, you know, it, it looked, it looked like an old house, not the dump or the dilapidated look that it has now. So what the abutters do oppose is building a behemoth three-story structure that changes the character of the neighborhood, far exceeds the size of all the other houses in the neighborhood. So I respectfully urge the board to consider these factors carefully and encourage the applicant to build a single-family home design that's more in line with the existing scale and character of the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan.
Uh, if you wanna see what the house looked like?
Sure, we'll take a quick peek. I see. It looks a lot better now. It looks a lot better there than now. Okay, sir. Tell us your name, please.
Sean Flanagan. I also live at twenty-four Allen Ave, and I'm director butter to not only eighteen, oh, Eighteen Allen Ave, but also Fifteen Morris. And I, I wanna correct one thing my wife mentioned. Um, when we purchased our house ten years ago, we renovated, but we didn't need a variance. We got a permit, building permit. We got an asbestos abatement permit. We removed the asbestos, and we renovated the inside of the house. We did not need any variances.
Very good.
Secondly, I wanna question one thing that the attorney said. He mentioned that the existing Fifteen Morris Ave was a cottage, okay? And he, I think he said that the new property is gonna be a cottage. I don't think a fif, a thirty by forty-seven, they can go thirty-five feet, would be considered in anybody's realm, a cottage. They could call it a bungalow, but it's, it's still a thirty by forty-seven. I think the ordinance calls for thirty-five feet high, so they're probably gonna go to thirty-five feet, would be my guess. There's no, there's no sketch or, or anything to show what this thing is gonna look like, so like Jay mentioned, Sean mentioned, they're gonna go with the, you know, we're going with what they proposed a month ago. I don't even realize, you know, why we're even here. The only thing that changed, and I think Ms. Hayward mentioned that, was that it's the same building, same lot, same size. They changed the word from a two-family roundhouse to a one-family roundhouse. They didn't change anything else. Nothing else has been changed. Again, she mentioned a townhouse that by definition, by townhouse. Interesting, this Wesley Ave, um, piece of property. They're taking the Wesley Ave like a chess game, and they're gonna add it to Morris Ave. So now, the people that live at Eighteen Allen, who park on Wesley Ave, you know, technically won't be able to park there. Where are they gonna park? I think a gentleman at, at the last, the last meeting, the March seventeenth meeting, I think this gentleman over here had asked, the question is to the people in Eighteen Allen Ave, where are they gonna park? And Mr. Cole's answer, and I quote, "The property owners, Weers Beach Property, will have to address that." Will have to address that, the same owners of Morris Ave. So it should be addressed now. Where are they gonna park? You know, in future, you know, the few, these, the people that live there now, nice couple, very quiet. You know, we had issues with the, when they had, when they ran an Airbnb. I'd come home from the movies, be people in my driveway. If, if Allen Ave is eliminated, if Wesley Ave is, is eliminated from parking for the Eighteen Allen Ave people, maybe these people aren't gonna park there, cause they know they can't park there. Last winter, when I came up for the weekend, Mark's truck was in my driveway. Very nice, and I didn't yell and scream. It was the middle of a snowstorm. The next morning, I said, "Mark," I said, "you realize that, you know, your truck is in my driveway?" Gee, I was told that I could park there. All right, well, you can't. That's my property. And he was very nice. We moved it, and he's back on Allen Avenue. They don't maintain Allen Avenue. There's a fifty-gallon, maybe it's one of those propane tanks, that's been sitting unplugged in the back of the yard since we've lived there. And we bought the house July first of two thousand fifteen. So it'll be ten years, ten years and another month. So the applicant references Twelve Thompson Ave as a, as a property. I think it's exhibit nine in your, in your packet, either from this, this meeting or the last pa, meeting. That building's a big building. The guy just built it. Beautiful-looking, new, modern construction. It's twenty-five by twenty-four. It's probably thirty feet high. I don't know. But I think, uh, if you, if you ask, you may wanna ask George Winchell, who is tonight, who's here tonight, as to what his feelings are about what goes on at that property where he is, because the noise and the motorcycle, you know, ask him how that works out for him, just as a, as a reference to a property that they're comparing it to. The other interesting property that they reference is the new, two, the two properties up on Centenary. And they show pictures of, of Centenary. Now, the newest one with the garage is twenty-six by thirty-four. And it's, looks like, I can't, I'm not gonna get up there and measure, but it looks like it's probably thirty-five feet high. It's twenty-six by thirty-four, and I know that because I measured it the other day. So about a month ago...
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Flanagan. Is it three stories, that twenty-six by thirty-four building?
Uh, no, I'm gonna give you these anyways.
I'm just curious, it's... Unfortunately...
So, the issue, the issue, this is where we get into this, the idea, and even sitting here for three hours, all the people talking about what, what you guys are, you know, trying to do for, for quality zoning for the people who live there. The owners of this property don't live there. In fact, they were living on Haven Ave. They moved out of Haven, from my understanding, they moved out of Haven Ave, and now that has become an Airbnb. So none of the people in this room, other than these people, live, live there. We live there. I live there year-round. Getting back to, getting back to Centenary, so the pictures that I show you. So about a month ago, OSHA showed up with Eversource. And it was, and I didn't hear this, I heard this secondhand, but the OSHA guy was commenting to the builder or the, or people on the street, that how could this get built? Because the thirteen-eight wires were too close to the house. Shouldn't have been built, and it's built. So somebody had to pay. I don't know whether it's the city paid for it, or the builder paid for it, or the homeowner paid for it to build that, the garage. There's no, I couldn't figure out what number that property is. If you look at the pictures that I took, they put two more telephone poles in the roadway. And they took a, a, I don't know, a six-by-eight board to get the wires away from the house.
I saw that.
So I mean, look, look at the pictures. It looks terrible.
I saw it, yes.
You know? It looks terrible. And ironically, the people behind them come, come back up three weeks ago from spending maybe the winter in Florida at forty, at twenty-eight margin. They get this big monstrosity in front of their house. They are actually livid. Last Wednesday, they put their house on the market. They went out of here. So there's gotta be some type of control about all this overbuilding, you know, this vertical, this vertical structure. Anybody that's walked that area, and I walk that area every day with my dog, sometimes twice a day, that whole neighborhood can't support a thirty by forty-seven, thirty-five-foot-high building. Can't do it. Forget about the parking. Just the aesthetics of the space. If, 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 if this particular applicant is allowed to do this, somebody's gonna be back here three months from now with another one, and another one. It's, the, it's gotta stop. It really has to stop. And, you know, it's affecting the people who actually live there.
Thank you for all that information, Mr. Flanagan.
I think that's it for me. I know, I know you're cutting me short, but...
But the hour is getting late.
No, I will say one thing.
I appreciate everything you've told us, believe me.
You know, they, they, what do they, what do they say? You can, you can put lipstick on a pig, but it's still a pig. Thank you.
Mr. Whitaker, is it?
I'll be short. Been short all my life. I'll try to be. My name's George Winchell. I live, my wife, currently at Eleven Thompson Ave year-round. I've been coming up to Thompson Ave for the past fifty-five some years. Teenager, working for my boss, who had the two properties on Morris. As you know, Methodist Circle, the old campground, Wesley Ave was a logging road. And the owner didn't realize, you know, one of our neighbors got ahold of the owner, who did not, some lawyer from New Hampshire Timber didn't know that he owned it, um, because it was a number of years ago. Our neighbor bought it, and I bought the piece of property next to my sa, my, my house. And these people that he's representing also bought Wesley that apparently they wanna incorporate. Just a little history. So when I, when my wife and I bought it thirty-three years ago, about thirty years ago, when we went to tear down the camp, like a lot of people in the neighborhood have done to improve it, John, Mr. John Ashy, who was the building inspector, I believe, back then, uh, said, "I can go up, don't go out." So I look at the picture that I just saw tonight, um, and that, that building is massive. Like Sean had said, if they wanna build a single-family home on that footprint, uh, fine, I don't care how high they go, cause John Ashy told me, "Go up, just don't go out beyond the footprint of the house." And it's, definitely takes away from the character of the, the neighborhood that I've been coming up here for fifty-five years. With all the camps, people have done a great job. But if they put a underground, under the house, a garage to park the cars, there's no way, there, it's probably gonna be a, a four-point turn. I'm a retired cop. Four-point turn to get out of there. There's no way they could back straight out. And what, ma'am, what you mentioned earlier about backing onto a public road, our road has been accepted, Thompson, uh, has been accepted as a, as is by the city council. And Mr. Anderson tells me we're on the list to be paved, and Morris is on the list to be accepted. Once that's accepted, it'll be a city road, um, as is, so that may be what you referred to about backing onto public road, if it's illegal. I learned that tonight, uh, but that's another issue that I just heard about. I think that's, it's getting late. I thank you for what you people do. And if you have any questions of me, I know it's late. Thank you.
Thank you for your, but... Anybody else? Mr. Walker, you wanna do a little rebuttal?
Oh, wait. There were three people that couldn't be here tonight. Did you receive their letters? Pam Carr, Noreen Kelly, and...
We do have a...
We have letters.
We do.
No, we, we have them. We'll make sure they gets in the record.
All three?
I have... Doberman?
That's would be, that's the one, Debbie Evans at Seven Morris, I think.
Kelly?
Yeah.
Noreen Kelly.
Yeah, Noreen Kelly. Sean Flanagan?
Yeah.
No, I don't have Pam.
Did I read her a letter?
You can just...
I'll give it to you.
Give it to me and, or us, rather, and we will make sure it gets in the record. Yep.
Ma'am, you wanna say something? Hello?
Hi, I'm Shannon Casey. I'm a local real estate broker in the area. There's a lot of people here really passionate about the community. I am as well. I've lived here my whole life. So as far as Fifteen Morris Avenue goes, I was at the property last week. It was built in eighteen eighty-seven. It does not have good bones at this point. There is no saving Fifteen Morris Avenue, so something new has to go there. We've heard a lot tonight, uh, maybe some assumptions about the gentlemen doing the project. They are year-round residents here. They're very young, spirited investors. I'm also really privy to a lot of the other large-scale projects that are going on in the, in the Laconia. I know them very well. Um, in the Weers area in particular as well, there's some very, very large housing developments going up by some very large developers. This neighborhood is specifically very unique, um, and it's not gonna be a neighborhood where a large developer comes in because of all the, the neighbors that are there. There's not really a way to acquire a lot of the property. So it is gonna take individual investors and owners that are gonna have to come in here and buy these, these homes, that, and kind of piecemeal them and upgrade them in the neighborhood. Fifteen Morris Avenue, the way it sits, it is in the phone line. It, it is dangerous. There's really nothing else you can do with the building besides tear it down. There's been a lot of talk tonight about the height of the building. We will be inside the height requirement, and that is not anything that they're asking for. It's really just the specific variances, um, on the, um, on the setbacks, which will make the building more conforming for what it is. If you go visit the site now, it is definitely not conforming at all. One of the gentlemen was speaking, and he was adamant about LLCs purchasing properties. An individual can purchase a property and put it under an LLC or a trust, and just because a property is in an LLC doesn't mean that it's a corporation or a business by any means whatsoever. So I just wanted to point that out. Yes, but an individual can take ownership in an, in an LLC and a trust. That makes no difference. The gentlemen that are doing this project, um, they could focus their attention on other neighborhoods. They do own other properties. They are doing new developments in other areas. Um, they love this neighborhood. They've lived in this neighborhood, and they wanna see the neighborhood improved. It is, um, not anything, again, about the height requirement. It's gonna meet the height requirement. It is not anything, again, about the height requirement. It's gonna meet the height requirement. What exists now, someone was throwing around the word monstrosity about the new project. What exists there now is a monstrosity, and it needs to get cleaned up. So with all the other neighborhoods, you know, in the Weers evolving, you know, this neighborhood as well needs to be developed, or it's gonna be left behind. You know, you just go a couple streets over, and the projects that are being approved are, are huge. And someone could argue that those are monstrosities, but I would say, I guess, beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And as long as they're meeting all of the other requirements, I don't see why they would be denied for those types of things. And the variances that they're seeking are very minimal. They did that to work with the community. That's why they went from six down to two. So they did scale down the project and really are just looking for a footprint that's workable, so they can come up with something that works for, for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Very quickly.
I'm sorry, let, let the.
Sure.
Be very quick. Jay Dooley, twenty-two Morris Ave. Just very quickly, I've, I've been in insurance for thirty-six years, and anything that's in an LLC has to be a commercial policy. A trust can be a personal policy. So just by that nature, if it's an LLC, it's commercial. Also means they can rent it. It's, I'm just saying, there's nothing else in the neighborhood that is a commercial property. Everything is individually owned. I'm just gonna say this as well, and you guys can decide, but as my brother said, we didn't get this notice till late Friday. I spoke with an attorney today before we came in. They had two months working with an attorney to fill out the application, to do all this. I had no time. I mean, literally, no time to do this. So I don't have the plans. You know, they, they came in, you know, he said, well, we don't know how high it is, we don't know this or that, don't have the plans. Don't know, you know, don't know how they're gonna use Wesley Ave. Didn't talk about green space. The lot right now is twenty-three hundred square feet. They're proposing to put a building on that's thirty-six hundred. I don't know, I don't have the plans. But three stories at, three stories high at, at twelve hundred, you know, feet for the. Plus the deck. That building up on Centenary Ave that people were talking about, it's not, the garage really is not underground. It's about half underground. So it's, it really could be, you know, three and a half stories. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that. It has to be a commercial property if it's.
Thank you for the education. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. So back in March, they came with six variances. They toned it down markedly. Tone the project down markedly, and we're only asking for two variances. One, for parking. They have two parking spaces and a garage, so they're compliant there. And the setback. They have four setbacks that are non-compliant. This property will bring it into more conforming situation, and that's it. The fact that they may own property at eighteen Allen Roads is irrelevant. The height variance that they asked for before is irrelevant because they have to be compliant. So, and whether we call it a cottage, or a townhouse, or a single-family residence, we'll just call it a single-family residence because that's what it is. That's what's there now. That's what'll be on the backside. So bottom line, I believe that we've met all the criteria for a variance. I believe this board has approved similar variances in the past, and we respect the request you approve both of them this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
However, I don't see what you're currently proposing, because you gave me pictures of what was there last time, right? That's what's in my packet of the old photos. Am I not correct?
No, not of the, there's no photos of the, the building going forward, because we, we don't care at this juncture. The only issue is the setback. That's why, that's why the footprint, no, no, that's why you just need to worry about a footprint. Footprint right now is absolutely non-compliant. The new footprint will be fully compliant.
How does that affect the property, as they mentioned, the parcel that you're joining so that you can get that footprint? How does that impact that other piece of property?
It doesn't. It's gonna.
It doesn't make that other piece of property non, even more non-compliant?
There's nothing to do with it. It's a vacant lot.
That other parcel's not part of the other property.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't. This Wesley.
That Wesley Ave?
Correct.
It's not part of the other.
Completely separate and distinct, nothing to do with it.
Okay.
A non-issue, because it's.
I was curious, why did you not cut Wesley in half and have half go to Allen and half go to Morris?
So not a bad thought. If I thought of that, we might have suggested that, but the lot, small as it is, it's twenty-two hundred and thirty-six square feet. This is gonna increase it by fifty percent. It's a no-brainer, because it's increasing the.
I don't wanna see you sneaking in a rooftop deck that's gonna be above the height limit. That's what I'm worried about.
Okay, there's no suggestion of a roof deck at all. That was the last application, and that's not there at all, nor would the town approve that. Code enforcement aren't even gonna issue a permit for that, not based on this is a single-family house. Alrighty?
Very good, Mr. Walker.
I'm not happy.
Should we table for a month and get a picture?
I would suggest that, well, are we done with the public?
I don't, I, I just don't feel like I have enough information.
Oh, and the public here at this point. Thank you for reminding me.
With, with the, the design, or, I don't know.
I'm worried that it's gonna end up being a duplex with a deck on top, on the roof. You know, they're calling it a one, one family house, but people put in an extra bathroom and a partition here, and next thing you know, you have a duplex with a rooftop deck, which is what we started at a month ago.
So I'm just giving you a, if that was to happen, it'd be in violation of the zoning ordinance then?
Yeah.
And they'd have a daily fine, I think, of two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars a day. But they couldn't get a CO for the second unit either, since they don't meet density. So it's, it's pretty much an impossibility for them to.
To.
To do that.
Could that be too far?
My, my, my points of this are, I'm with Wesley, Wesley, known as Wesley Ave. So the, the lot in eighteen Allen has zero parking.
Correct.
They're parking on.
The road.
Well, whoever owns this now, which the, the, the city website, it does not give a property owner, so I'm kinda concerned about that. So that's one thing. And then relative to the, to the size, they're throwing around all these numbers of square footage. At the end of the day, you've got square footage in deck, house, garage, and some concrete. And regardless of how many floors it is, there are some homes in this area that are three floors, but they're kind of two floors, but then a peak.
Right.
This is, the one that they proposed in March was more square-oriented. So, you know, the footprint, I think that there is some, some room to work with that, but my, my biggest concerns are what's happening with Wesley, that you're taking away parking from them, and I would not want to approve this unless they owned it outright. But I also don't, I don't want to get trapped in a circle. They say, hey, we went, we bought the property, we came back, we assumed that you'd approve it. So I, there's some kind of circular thing there that I'm a little uncomfortable to, to step into. And, and at the same time, between the public outcry from March and what's happening now, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about this. Scott, we're compliant with getting it out on time, so we're fine there, but we're hearing the people didn't get it. At the end of the day, they just didn't get it, so.
So we met the legal requirement outlawed in the state RSA.
Yeah.
That's why we keep all those certified meals, they, they will be forever filed with the application.
No, no, I'm, I'm in agreement. I'm saying, we are completely compliant. There's no way that anybody would be able to come back.
Once it leaves our hands and we drop it off at the post office, we have no control over the post office and how they.
So I'm just gonna give my three things, Alan. Number one, there's no design for the house, and these, these people want something that they can say, okay, it's a stretch for you, you're gonna be, they're probably, in the end of the day, they're gonna build something that's gonna be a little bigger, bigger than they want, but these people, the residents, would like to have an idea of what's going in there. And I.
I, I would like to see a, a design of what's going, going in there. And the other concern I have is that two-car garage and, and trying to turn into it, it's only a fourteen-foot wide road.
I'd like to see a diagram of, of a turn radius going into that garage. I'm, I'm not gonna say that it's possible.
A sixteen-foot door, and the cars pulling deep into the house, it, it leaves that area open where you could swing.
It's, no matter what. Get the second car in there.
No matter what, that's tight.
It's tight.
You have to get a smart car.
But I kinda like the idea of it being in a garage instead of a parking space. I kinda like that.
Well, they had the garage last time.
Thompson Ave has that.
Right. Well, that Thompson Ave one is like a half and half, and it's kind of, it's really ugly. But again, the board is not, that's not okay.
So like I said last time.
So we get a, a plan? Is that what we wanna do?
I, I, and I'm, I'm a little disappointed that the owners didn't meet with the residents. I think that maybe all of this, maybe a good portion of it could have been set aside. I'm making a, a suggestion. It's not anything that they have to do. But anyway, I would suggest tabling it for the reason of Allen is indeterminate. These people, Allen, eighteen Allen is parking on town property. So if, if they or whoever all here wants to make an issue of that, then they gotta kind of figure that out. Because these guys can't buy it and take away their parking, but then again, eighteen Allen doesn't have any parking right now.
That's what I'm saying. Why don't we split that Wesley Ave in half? Half goes one side, half goes the other.
Could the town, does the town own this property?
No. So what Wesley Ave is, is a paper street, so it doesn't, so you can't use it as a parking calculation currently for any of the parcels.
I got you.
So if they merge it, then it actually becomes part of the lot, and it can be used as part of a calculation. But since it's a separate lot, and it, it's, you can't count that negatively towards the Allen's one. If they don't have parking, that other lot, they might be using it as parking, but it's not legally.
No, no, and that's what, that's what we're. That's what we're saying.
He's parking in the other guy's yard.
Yeah.
The, the other, it becomes much more complicated, I'm sure, as the attorney can make you well aware of. That, those paper streets, it, it's very complex, deeding those back, and then if you were to merge it with one law and with the subdivide off to give half, you're, you're going back to planning board now for a complete. It is very complex. Not saying it's impossible.
I understand that it is complicated.
The complexities of it are.
But what I'm saying is for this right here, he's using it as a calculation, which, yeah, that works. But it's just a little more complicated than that, I think. I'm just suggesting that maybe we, we, that we table it till next month and give them a cha, give them a chance to be able to put together a design.
You okay with that, Mr. Walker?
Eric, what were your thoughts? You, you were gonna say something.
Like I was saying last time, just given the density of the neighborhood and how all the houses kind of predate all of our zoning laws, right? Like, you can't really improve any of those properties without some variances, right? So they came before us last time, and they took that feedback, and they came back with, with an improved design. I think it's, if we're gonna deny them, I think, I think we should at least give them some clear guidance of what we will accept. Because I think it's a little unfair for us to just keep.
Well, that's why we could table it and come back with a design.
It is hard for us to judge without looking at exactly what they're talking about. We're hearing the concerns from the residents. We can't really.
Make a decision.
Address those concerns if we have no idea what we're talking about. We're just looking at a footprint. Right.
I think you, you need to be exceptionally clear in what you want from the applicant that you are going to approve. Because if you continue to table or deny and ask them to come back, it is a little bit unfair of the applicant as well. So I think if you're looking to do that, you need to be, because this is their second time back.
Well, I think it, I don't mean this in a, to be harsh, but I was surprised they came back without a design to show us.
So on that, we don't always get designs for zoning board. Zoning board is the conceptual idea before people spend all the money on engineering designs. So typically, when it comes to zoning board, you are not going to spend an astronomical amount of money to engineer for a concept that might not get approved. And then, if you ask for somebody to completely engineer something, for them to come in and deny it, and then to come back and re-engineer it, they came in with engineered stuff, it was denied. They don't want to spend the money on another idea that is gonna be denied. So I think if you want to be clear and fair to the applicant and fair to the abutters, you need to give them the clearest expectations of what you're looking to approve.
So I, I agree that, I, I understand what you're saying, and, and, and I accept that. But I'm still not seeing a major change from what they proposed before, other than they're calling it single-family instead of the townhouse last time. And I know he's talked about a couple of setbacks, you know, that he's brought a couple of setbacks into compliance. Other than that, I, I really don't see a substantial difference.
So they reduced the height, so now it is gonna be compliant with the height.
Yeah.
And I, I don't remember the application from, from last time, but they did request six, six variances.
That was because it was gonna be duplex, and that's what they had to have for that, that situation.
This is a significantly different application then, than what has come forward. Because it has gone to a single family, and it has a reduced height. It meets green space, so all they're asking for is.
The park, the driveway.
The driveway.
The driveway.
Because it is impossible to do, well, I think there's a nineteen-foot requirement for driveway length.
Yeah, and I think they've got nine.
For that, there is no way, on any of those parcels down there, you're gonna get a nineteen-foot driveway.
That's true.
That is a physical impossibility.
Yeah.
And I, I think they demonstrated last time that you have the smallest of building envelopes there. So I think whatever you do, you need to be very, very clear and fair with the applicant, so they can come back.
My only issue with what they currently have here is that I, I'd like to see some proof that you can actually get vehicles into a garage on that street like that, because I'm not convinced that that, that is possible.
I, I think that's completely fair, given that they're asking for the variance for the driveway. To, can you give me the, the profile to demonstrate that this is, this is a possibility?
But that would be, that would be covered at planning, though.
No, this will not go to planning board. Single-family homes do not go to planning board. Unless they were asking for a conditional use permit of some sort, which they're not, or there was a wetland on the site, which there is not.
So if this doesn't go to planning, we definitely need to see some concept of a plan.
Well, so, it would go, it goes to a building permit, and that's where the, everything will get approved, was at the building permit. And that's, the code enforcement validates that it meets all the zoning requirements, it meets all the fire, building code requirements. And then DBW looks at the driveway, which is like three feet, so.
I mean, this is a tough one, because you, you can't really build a compliance structure on that, that property. It's not really possible.
And a lot of these older neighborhoods where you have such, this was done before there was zoning. This whole area was laid out before there was zoning. It, it's trying to make something compliant that was never meant to be.
Oh, it, it would be impossible.
I, I'm okay with the setbacks that they're showing right now, but I don't want it to be a giant square box with a deck on it.
The, the only thing I'm asking is that we are clear with the applicant, so if we ask them to, to table it, that when they come back, they have clear expectations of what's going to happen.
I'm with Eric. I am very concerned about, I get a fourteen-foot road, that you're gonna be able to get those cars into that garage.
So you can't make the turn, they're gonna park in front of, in front of the house, right?
On that, though, you, I don't, you can't make the road wider.
I know.
Like, that's also, you're, you're stuck there. So.
But I think with the way they park now, because they're talking about coming off of a Morris Ave and making the turn into an underground garage, but the way the parking is now, you come off Morris Ave and use Wesley Ave as parking. They, they could go, because I've seen the property, and, and to me, you can do that, but I'm not so sure you can turn and get under the garage.
It's three and a half feet from the edge of the structure to the road. I'm.
Yeah.
Maybe they need to increase that a little to make it work. I just wanna see a sketch.
If we're gonna allow them to create this example, let's allow them to create it and share it. So, instead of, because we could speculate about the term.
I, I know. That's what Eric is saying. He would like to see evidence that they can do that, and, and I, and I agree.
And I think, I think that's absolutely reasonable. I think, all I'm saying is that if we want that, if we want something else, we're just very clear with them.
Okay, so there's one thing we're really, really clear with, and it relates to the ordinance they're asking for with parking.
Right.
And, and from a building perspective, the footprint on the terrain, it's not unreasonable. It's bigger a little bit, but the actual footprint on the ground, I'm reasonably satisfied with that.
Like the overlay of what?
Yes, so they, they've taken a consolidating deck and driveway, garage and house, and basically put it into a block that sits on. Regardless of how high it goes up, the footprint that they're taking up on the ground is, I think, within reason.
So kind of the structure coverage.
Right, so.
So there, so the second.
Do we vote on that one?
So I do want to point out, there are two separate applications.
Right.
There is that one application.
Yeah.
Then there is the one application for parking.
Yep.
Maybe you, you render a decision on one, and you ask for the further information for the second.
Yeah, I have no problem. Yeah, I have no problem with the setbacks.
Well, and I think that what happens with that property is another thing as well. It seems to me to make sense, take Wesley, divide it in half, give, give half or I don't know how you can do the give half to eighteen Alan and give, leave the other half. But it seems to me in that package that we had in March, there was a designation that split that in half and maybe it was before. I don't know. Like, it seemed to me that there was a line on the drawing that split Wesley in half.
All, all I know is this is the application that we have now.
So, um.
And maybe with the feedback we've given them for this, they can.
So should we take a look at the application on setbacks and, and approve it? Cause I, I wouldn't mind making a motion to approve the setback variance.
Well, okay, yeah, I would be okay, I would be okay with that, making the consideration that the property is merged with Wesley in some form. But, that it's merged with Wesley. Whether that be half of it or all of it. I think that the, the, the footprint, the, the setbacks are reasonably reasonable for me.
Well, we had talked about that as part of that condition, that the two lots, um, two lots eighty-two and eighty-three are merged. As part of that um approval.
They're gonna build something here.
Yeah. So, do you want me to go ahead, Mike, and make an, a variance? I mean, I'm sorry, a motion?
Approve the setbacks and.
Well, well.
Table the driveway?
I, that, I would like to table the driveway. Yeah.
So how do we, well, just before we go there, how are we going to, cause we wanna see the design of the structure and the, and the residents wanna see the design. They wanna see that it fits. That's what they're looking for. So how do we, how do we ask that?
So, th- there is no zoning requirement that they build anything that has any design criteria. So, I don't know how you would hold them to a standard that doesn't exist.
It's their property and they can do what they want with it at the end of the day, for sure. They bought it.
I mean, if you wanted to pursue design standards for every development they came in.
Can we not do that?
Uh, we can absolutely not do that. I'm just, I'm just throwing options out there. Of form-based code.
So, where do we wanna go, Mike?
Two years ago, I asked, let's have limits on how high a building can be.
But they're not gonna be.
To the footprint, but we don't have that, so they can go thirty-six feet, thirty-five feet.
Didn't go thirty-five, yeah.
And.
Yeah.
I have to say, I think it's unfortunate, but I think it's.
Stop them from doing that.
The future. I, I'm, and it's, it's sad for people that are living there now and the way they have been living for decades. But I think moving forward, you're gonna start seeing more and more people going up higher in that area. When someone's gonna sell something small, something high is gonna go up. And it's, it's going to happen. And, and I know you don't wanna hear it, but it's gonna happen.
If, as long as the ordinance says you can go to thirty-five, they can go to thirty-five.
You know, if a property goes for sale, some developer's gonna see it as be, a, a great investment.
Alright.
Unfortunately, sorry, I mean.
So, so we've got two, two applications. So, um I'll go ahead with the setback one if, first.
Yeah, let's do one at a time.
We have to do them one at a time. So, uh, with regards to application ZB two oh two five dash zero five eight um, asking for a variance from the setbacks on fifteen Morris Ave. I make a motion to approve the setback uh request. Because uh, criteria number one, the proposal um actually brings the property into more compliance than it currently is, providing, providing the two lots, uh, tax map eighty-two, eighty-two and eighty-three are joined and that we see a deed showing that they are joined. If that is the case, then this building will be in more compliant than it originally is. So therefore, it um meets criteria number one and it would meet criteria number two. Substantial justice would be done because the, there is a benefit to the applicant who can now um construct uh something onto this lot. Uh, the value of the property, that is to be determined, I would imagine. And number five, the um, that makes for a reasonable use of the property if this, if the setback um changes are made, it will allow the property to be used.
We have a motion.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
So then we have the other application which has to do with the parking. And I think I would like to ask that this particular um request be tabled until we get, how should we put, mention, how should I say this, Eric? It, cause we're concerned about the turn radius. The turn radius of cars to get into that garage when Morris Ave is fourteen feet wide.
And it may be that the, the house needs to be shortened on the north side in order to fit.
We would like to, to, to have evidence that it can make.
Thirty feet, have it twenty-six feet.
Or, or something. It may be reducing the footprint going in that direction in order to accommodate the parking and/or the access to the garage.
Yeah, does it, does.
Mr. Chairman, I know you've closed the hearing, but could I address that very specific issue and I have a solution to the problem that you have?
Please, Mr. Walker, help us out.
Two things. If you'd like to cut the lot in half and have half go to eighteen, that would also be perfectly fine. If that addresses your eighteen.
Well, I would think it would give Allen Avenue a parking spot.
That's what you were suggesting. It's really not an issue with us, but if that's important to the board, we're happy to do that. Two, we're happy to have the garage be accessed from the Wesley Avenue side. Forget Morris. There's plenty of side there.
That's what I wondered.
Yeah, so that, that was my suggestion. Didn't mean to interrupt, but that, we're happy to have it come in that side. If that solves the turn radius from it, I think it address yours and.
But there's a height difference from Wesley going into it. How would they get from there? Is it significant?
Well, there's a grade there.
It would have to be a different elevation, that's all.
So I still think this needs, this needs to be tabled.
Well, that, well.
Because this request is for um the, for the cars to enter from Morris Ave, because that's what's been presented to us. So if they want to either give us a plan for the turn radius and prove that it can happen um off of Morris Ave, or if they decide to change it off, off of Wesley Ave, then so be it. But I think we need some evidence about the parking of the cars in the garage.
And, and give us an idea of a design that fits with the.
Well, if they're gonna change the design to ac- access from Wesley, they'll have to come with a whole new design, so.
So, we have, we have approved.
Table that one.
What, we've approved, you can build something. Your foot's in the door.
So, I make a motion to table.
Can I just say one thing? He, he was, uh, it, just, if you're gonna split Alan, uh Wesley, Wesley is fifteen by eighty. So he's suggesting splitting Wesley fifteen by forty goes to Morris. Fifteen by forty goes to. Goes to Alan.
Yes.
There'd been no discussion about green space, because now this, that changes the square footage of the lot.
Well, we, we only have these two variances and nothing has to do with green space. We, we can't address it.
The new square footage, no longer is, they're not adding twelve hundred square feet to the lot anymore. They're adding six hundred. So changes the.
Well, green space in that whole area is a. Compromise. Let's table this.
Yeah, well, so we'll, we'll table the parking lot. I make a motion to table the parking lot.
Thank you.
We've given specific concerns to you, what we're concerned about with the parking, so.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? We'll table the parking. Lord have mercy.
Next to the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your patience.
And that's just a, just a heads up, we do not re-notice for continued hearings, since it was continued at a public hearing.
So how will we know when the next day is? Cause we're probably gonna hire him to turn.
June sixteen.
June sixteen.
So it'll be June sixteen?
You're not gonna be here.
I won't be here.
Oh, God.
Don't we have another issue in front of us?
Yes, we have more, we have more in the case.
We have one, one more.
I feel so sorry for you all. We have to have Union Avenues first.
Oh, my Lord.
Twelve fifty-eight Union Avenue. How do you do, young lady? Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, my name's Amber Fudge. I'm representing Whiskey Tavern. I'm here for. Fudge, yes. Just like the candy. I also own six oh three sweets. Um, so I'm here for a variance to get a, one of the L E D signs, just like the Legion did before me. I swear to you, it will not be flashing. I have one at the candy store. I know all the rules and it will be, not be any brighter than the big giant sign across the street that says Golden Arches.
Thank you.
I know all the rules. I have one.
Any questions for Ms. Fudge?
This is on Union Ave?
Yes, right across the street from McDonald's.
We can live with that.
Everything sounds reasonable at eleven o'clock.
I have to, okay.
Scott, I'll get some light.
Anybody from the public wants to talk for or against this? Come on up and talk about it. I'm joking.
I make a motion, I make a motion to uh approve the variance two oh two five dash zero five nine for one two five eight Union Ave. Uh, granting the variance is not contrary to the public, public interest. Uh, the granting of the variance fits the spirit of the ordinance. The granting of the variance will do, will do substantial justice, because it will help with the business. Um, there is no evidence that the property values will be diminished or increased and relative to unnecessary hardship. There is already a sign that's there, they're just making it better. I'm complete.
Second, that motion?
Thank you. Any further discussion on that sign? It's not gonna be flashing. Thank you. We're all approved.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you for your patience staying all night.
The other person's not here.
Yeah, that's her.
I thought they were.
Yes.
How do you do, Ms.?
I'm good, thanks. Um, Amy J- Johnston.
What do you wanna do on your house?
We'd like to um utilize our space in the best possible way by putting a deck and a carport. Um, that'll be, you know, multi-use, so being a deck and a carport. And, um, yeah, I guess that's, that's about it.
So you wanna park underneath the deck?
Exactly.
And the deck is too close to the road. That's why you have to come in tonight.
That's right.
So the front condition, according to the ordinance, is fifteen feet. You wanna go nine feet, leaving six.
Yes.
Is that correct? And the side setback requirement is ten feet. You wanna go seven, leaving three on the side.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I told you at nine thirty earlier tonight when we first started out, my estimate was a little bit off for the night.
It's alright.
This is off topic. Could, could we have a time limit on people in the public?
So, dur- during our recess, I told, uh, I was like, hey, great time to amend the rules, so we can put a time limit on it next time.
Three minutes. Like spit it out.
Yeah, have a hard job.
So are we in the fo- board talking right now?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So it is obvious, pre-existing non-conforming. The house itself is actually in right of way. In the private road. And it's within inches of the back, so the entire thing is pre-existing non-conforming anyway. And and you have, is there a deck there already?
No. My neighbors, my neighbors have a deck, but on the back, the other, the other side.
And the deck is, is, the, the deck is gonna end up being a little bit narrower than the house looks like.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm okay with this.
How long is that deck?
It's twenty-one, I think it's twenty-one feet.
That's six feet off the back and eight feet off the front. It's what, ten feet wide?
Yeah, this is a dimension.
Eighteen.
Director, what is the, the side setback?
Ten feet.
Is it left, so, so it's ten feet, it's fifteen on the sides and ten in the back?
Fifteen on the front, ten on the side.
Yep. Oh, okay, so there's, is, they're, they're fine that way. Now, do you park, she, they park there now? Okay, I see, yeah, yeah, okay. And you're just basically gonna swing around and park under the deck, understood? And I think that this is fine. There's six.
I'm okay with it. None of her neighbors are here to, to tell us how bad of an idea it is. That speaks volumes at this point.
Wasn't it a fun, educational evening?
She's being very patient. Thank you.
Why don't you make a motion?
Oh, you gotta open it to the public first.
You gotta open it to the public.
Is there anybody from the public that can speak for or against this lady's deck? I'll close the public hearing. I'll take the motion.
How about amongst it?
You haven't made an emotion all night?
I was going to, but then.
Now I have to like find all the stuff.
Oh, Jane will do it then.
Talk to me, don't do it on sound.
I know somebody that's already done their homework tonight. I know someone that's already done their homework tonight.
Who? I know.
I need you to show me how you do that, cause I really respect what you do.
Do, are you, are you gonna make the motion?
You want me to make the motion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
That was yours.
Another criteria.
Oh, isn't that the same as this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
You could just say, as, reference in the application.
Yes, absolutely. That's even easier.
I would like to make a motion to approve application number ZB two zero two five dash zero six zero. A variance requested from Article Six, Section two three five dot three five of the zoning ordinance to permit a deck as specified on what was entered by the applicant.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Good luck, Ms. Johnston.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you all.
Drive safe.
Oh, my.
Lord have mercy.
Well, I thought it was gonna be eleven. It's only ten thirty-nine. I'm just gonna go home and put ice on my knee. Thank you very much.
Have ice on my knee and one.
Can't recall which one.
So I wonder what's, what's gonna happen with.
Are we done, are we done?
I'm not going home.
We did the whiskey tavern.
Oh, you, you've got a journey.
Any further, um, old business?
Let's go, end the stream first. Where you.